Good evening, everybody. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We are here to hear EA 23-0207. Richard J. Worley, Jr., Commissioner of the Baltimore City Police Department. I'm Isaac Gitzey Schleifer, Chair of the Committee. To my left is Councilman Conway, Councilman Burnett. We have Councilman Costello. And we have Councilwoman Porter and Councilman Glover. And before we get started, Acting Commissioner Worley, I'd like to thank you for stepping up to do this extremely difficult job. I can speak for myself that I have the utmost respect for you and the work that you've done over the years on multiple levels. And you've always been extremely transparent and responsive, and that's something that we desperately need, and that's something that we haven't always gotten. So, thank you for that. I will give you the opportunity to take the floor and present your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman Schleifer, Committee members, and members of the council for having me here today to be considered for the appointment to serve as Police Commissioner for Baltimore City. I'm honored to be standing here before you. I was born and raised in Baltimore, grew up in Pig Town. I spent 12 years living in Brooklyn. I've dedicated my life to serving Baltimore City Police Department. Deeply grateful to have the opportunity to lead the department that I started in and came up in. For the past 25 years, I've had the pleasure of working alongside some of the best and hardest-working men and women in law enforcement who have devoted their professional lives protecting and serving the citizens of Baltimore, most of which a lot of those executive team and other team members are here today. I've seen the strategies that have worked to help communities thrive and become safer, but I've also seen the policies and mandates that have hurt communities. For example, zero-tolerance policing didn't work. It alienated our community from the police. I knew it didn't work, and I refused to participate in most of the practices that it stood for. But I also know what does work: community policing. Working hand-in-hand with the communities, law enforcement partners, stakeholders, and all of us here today. Together, we can still create a safer Baltimore. I am committed to working every day to ensure that your police department lives up to your aspirations and becomes the agency that each of you wants and, most importantly, deserve. It's important that we work together in building on the current successes, but also work on to address our many shortcomings and our many challenges that we still have to achieve. We've had to achieve significant progress in addressing some of the public safety challenges our city faces, but we also have many more to conquer. A lot of this can be attributed to the vision set forth and the investments made by Mayor Scott, and I'm ready to continue and to elevate the partnership that he and I have had for a long time fighting crime and fighting for the city. With that, I'll have a short presentation on the vision and pillars for our department going forward. I can start out until the slides catch up. Basically, the very first thing is going to be the mission statement of the Baltimore Police Department. I'm going to read that statement because it's extremely important, because it's what I'm actually on Slide 2, but that's the mission statement right there. guides us. The Baltimore Police Department is dedicated to upholding the Constitution and enforcing laws in a fair, impartial, and ethical manner. We commit to creating and maintaining the culture of service that builds trust and legitimacy in all communities, values the sanctity of life, and provides for safety and well-being of all. I can just move on. Our department, every sworn member, professional member, and all who serve must be dedicated to upholding the Constitution and being fair, impartial, and ethical at all times. We must recommit ourselves to creating and maintaining the culture of service, systems They can catch up with the slides if we can. There we go. Well, yep, there we go. of accountability, and collaboration that builds trust and legitimacy in all communities Second slide is the visions and pillars of the community. With that, I want to share more of my vision and pillars that I would like to implement we serve. We value the sanctity of life. as the Police Commissioner. First and most importantly is community policing. We must get to know the community that we are protecting and serving and to provide This is the only part of the consent decree that we are not in, that we're behind in the safety and well-being of our city. We have the slides working? compliance. And it's the part that has led to a lot of the issues that we've had with the community by just not being in the community engaging. That's my number-one priority. You'll see, if I'm confirmed, there'll be some people that change seats to help us move towards that. We have to improve the efforts to engage the community and make our community safer by using community policing strategies citywide. Secondly, we must continue our progress on reducing violent crime and addressing all crimes. Third is staffing. Our staffing shortages, we talk enough about that. It's not an excuse. We do with what we have, but we are 500 officers short. Consent decree progress. If I'm confirmed my three years, I want to have us out of the consent decree by the time I turn the agency over to the next Commissioner. And also, number one that's going to help a great deal is boosting morale within the department so that we can be a better partner to the community. Next slide. Community policing. Under community policing, we must move from the warrior mentality to become guardians of the communities. Under our community policing plan, we must make more time for officers to engage the community. This means 40% of each hour should be spent in communities doing proactive enforcement, such as foot patrols, talking to the residents with the goal of improving policing, community relations, and working collaboratively to create problem-solving partnerships with the community. We want to restart our explorers program, which basically went down to zero. That thrived when I was the major in the Northeast. We had about 14 explorers. I want to get that program up and running. Cadets auxiliary program, which we have some auxiliary officers, I want to build that up to help with the burden that's on the patrol officers. And we already started promoting our cadet program in hopes of reviving it in the near future. And then in our professional staff, we want to bring in interns. We just had two come in today from University of Maryland. We want to expand our neighborhood policing plans to work directly with our neighborhoods and identifying priorities and strategies to address crime and quality-of-life issues. And we want to continue to build on our current district commander meetings and monthly newsletters. And lastly, we are currently starting and even graduating new classes within our Police Department Chaplaincy Program. Next slide. Next one is crime reduction. Even though overall crime is down and isn't enough, and we must do more to continue to push the reduction of violent crime. As of today, homicides are down 20%, and non-fatal shootings are down 9%. But let's be honest, the stats don't really matter if the citizens don't feel safe. So, that's our number-one priority. I can stand here and read stats to tell you how low crime is, but it doesn't mean anything if our citizens don't feel safe. It's also important that we continue to engage with our stakeholders and partners in working collaboratively to address the rise of crime involving our young people. Homicides involving juveniles are down compared to last year, but shootings involving juveniles are up significantly. Together with our communities, we must be intentional in our outreach, increase our community policing strategies, and implement evidence-based enforcement strategies to safeguard our young people. Addressing property crime and quality-of-life offenses must also be a priority. This is not a mass incarceration or an aggressive policing. This is community policing, where we get the individuals who need help, education, drug treatment, whatever it is, to get them out of the life of crime. We must take a comprehensive approach to ensuring consequences when necessary, but also services and resources when needed. Lastly, we must continue to work on the group violence reduction strategy and reducing homicides and non-fatal shootings. This is about collaboration and working with all our partners, stakeholders, and, most importantly, our neighborhoods to reduce crime in our city. Next slide. Staffing. As I mentioned earlier, we are more than 500 officers short. To be exact, it's 552 today. But that's actually encouraging a little bit, because last week it was 555. So, we've actually gone up three or gone down three, whichever way you want to look at it. I want to be very clear, though. This is not an excuse, and we can't afford to hide behind staffing numbers. Even if we hired 100 cops today, they're not going to be on the street for a year. So, we've got to work with what we have, and we have been doing that. And the men and women have been doing a fabulous job so far this year, and we'll continue to push as best we can. While staffing shortages are not unique to Baltimore, we have to get creative, aggressive, and relentless in our efforts to recruit new officers and to keep the officers we currently have. This includes looking at creating a lateral program. Other jurisdictions look to recruit our people and take our people after we train them. We want to do the same thing and return the favor to some of our other outlined counties and other state agencies. We have to put into place incentives for veteran officers to keep them. There is no incentive for an officer to remain after 26 years. They stop getting any type of pay increase based on longevity. Our recruitment efforts must become competitive. I think we are headed that way. Many different strategies to try to get officers to come here and to move into Baltimore and live in the city. In addressing our staffing shortages, we also must look at reorganizing the department, getting more officers out on the street, but being creative in how we use our limited resources to reduce crime and build trust. Lastly, I want to reach out to former officers who left in good standing. Over the last couple of years, we've had almost 200 officers either separate from the department, resign, or retire. I'm going to reach out to them and ask them to come back, and hopefully, some of them will come back. If we get 10%, that's 20 more officers. This is the way to attract officers still interested and serve at our department and our city. Next slide. Next, it's a consent decree. 85% of all paragraphs in the consent decree have been given a rating of either being in initial compliance or on track for initial compliance. We continue to work closely with DOJ, and monitoring team has said that BPD is firmly on the path to compliance. BPD has played host to over 40 other police agencies throughout the city, I mean, throughout the state, the country, and actually, the world. Some of them in Taiwan came to see what we were doing, to see how we built the model for reform. But we know there is work to be done, especially around community policing, supervision, and discipline. My hope is to steer the department in the full compliance and out of the consent decree during my tenure. Next slide. Boost morale. We must do more as an agency to boost morale for all members of the department, including our professional staff. That includes continuing with civilianization, but also involving our professional staff more. In June, we brought back our penning ceremony as part of the promotional process. We're talking about bringing it back as part of the graduation process. All things to boost morale, because a happier officer is more likely to engage the community and speak to the community and work with the community. Also, we must look to build the department for future with new police stations, updated technologies, new vehicles, and more. Lastly, we must strengthen our partnerships across the board from our neighborhood partnerships, local, state, and federal law enforcement partners, and all of our stakeholders. Together, we are working to build a stronger police department, but also move our city forward. Before I finish, one thing I want each of you to remember is, when you call 911, 911 for help, we want our officers to consider that the most important thing happening in that person's life each day and to treat it as such when they answer it, regardless of the type of call or the quality of call. We must use that as motivation to treat every call and every person in need with integrity, dignity, honor, and respect. Thank you.
I'd also like to recognize Councilman Torrance, who has joined us, and Councilwoman Ramos. I see we're also joined by former Mayor Bernardo C. Jack Young and former council members Carl Stokes and Mary Pat Clark. And we have our State's Attorney Ivan Bates here as well. And I apologize if I'm missing anybody. Before we get into testimony, I'll turn it over. Does any members of the committee have any questions? Yeah. Go ahead, Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and to your team. So, I wanted to start, since you noted it, the issue of community policing and rebuilding trust within the Police Department. Can you speak to, given your long tenure in this work, one of the biggest impediments to building that trust has been holding officers accountable for who are doing the wrong thing? Can you speak to your experience and your commitment to accountability and building a culture of accountability in the department and what your plans are moving forward to do that, so we can have a department that people do trust to do their jobs and do them constitutionally?
Yes. One of the big things that Commissioner Harrison did is he brought in DC NATO from FBI. What that does, first, he's got expertise in Public Integrity Bureau and Internal Affairs Investigations. Also, he has really no connections to any of the members, so he didn't come from within. So, he doesn't know the officers, so there's no personal relationships with the officers. So, he can judge and look at things a little more from an outside view and give discipline effectively and quickly. One thing we do have to work on is getting the cases done quicker. In the past, what would happen is cases would sit for a year, and we have to charge by 365 days. And we would wait until the 364-day to charge someone, and officers on the sideline for all those months, not doing anything, and then it starts all over. So, that's number one. Number two is, we have bolstered our Public Integrity Bureau in something we just recently started. We're going to start using, we have used right now, started using sergeants to do investigations. We have officer shortages in public integrity, but because we have officer shortages throughout, what we're going to do is put sergeants to investigate the cases as opposed to officers. Not only that, but it also allows for the better investigation if there is a complaint against an officer or a sergeant. And then, just over the last several years, the four-year reduction between complaints received are down 16%. A lot of our complaints now, more than even external complaints or internal complaints, officers complaining to others. But one of the biggest things we did is we did epic with ethical policing is courageous. What that means is that there's a policy in place that if an officer sees something that another officer does and does not react or does not stop it, they are culpable to whatever behavior that officer did, so that holds them accountable. So, there's no more standing around and "I didn't see this" or "I didn't see that." But one of the biggest things we have is body-worn cameras. Body-worn cameras don't lie. They don't hide anything, and they have to turn them on. There's strict policies for them turning them on, and they're punished for not turning them on. So, all those things, as well as being overseen by the Department of Justice and the consent decree monitoring team. Public Integrity and Internal Affairs was number one of the top priorities of the consent decree. It's one of the units that is required to be fully staffed. Everybody else, several other units are not fully staffed because of staffing shortages. But we're doing that by putting sergeants there and making better investigations. Plus, we're giving them a ton of training. They never got very little training before. So, all those things are leading up to making us a better police department, to hold officers accountable.
Am I, are we doing two questions, Mr. Chair?
No, we're going to start with one, and then we'll work our way through. Okay. I had, go ahead, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for being here and for all you've done, and I think we'll continue to do. I had a question about, when you're talking about staffing shortages. The previous Commissioner put in the smart policing plan, and I wonder if you can talk a little bit about that, but also the fact that, you know, the consent decree requires that, you know, we do a lot of proactive policing. I think it's 40%, 60%?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, we're not, I'm just going to say, we're likely not ever going to get to the staffing level that has been articulated, because this is a national issue and not just because of us. So, we need alternatives. So, I'm wondering if you can talk about your strategy for getting to that 40% community policing? And it links up to another question I will have later about the NCOs, but I just want to really understand a little bit better about how you're going to get there and also just coming up with alternatives like smart policing in order to, you know, utilize our resources more effectively.
Yeah. Basically, you're right. We're never going to get to probably 2,600 cops unless something dramatic happens. We have to do what we have to do with 2,045. I think that's the number. But what we have, the smart policing, is diverting calls to either the telephone reporting unit, 311. You can report your incidents online.
I'm sorry, just to clarify. Are you going to do anything more than the smart policing plan, or are you going to just keep with the smart policing?
No, I'm going to keep with that, but I'm also, that is actually helping a great deal. And there are also, we're going to put mandates for the officers to dedicate time to walking foot. There are going to be times where they're going to have to get out of the car. One of the things that we talked about at the consent decree hearing today is officers use what was called directed patrol. So, what that usually meant is that they would drive through an area for 15 or 20 minutes and count that as proactive. That is going away. We will not do that any longer. So, the only way you're going to get proactive enforcement is foot patrol, bike patrol, business check, vehicle stop. And we're pushing the foot patrol. And the one thing that I've seen is, over the community meetings over the last couple of months, they've been watching. They've been hearing me say foot patrol, foot patrol, foot patrol. So, we've gotten a lot of compliments about people, officers being out of the car. And I think we are not too far from that 40%, because I look at the calls for service. I look at the amount of time that we spend on calls for service and how many calls we have. Redistricting is going to help that immensely, because it balanced out all the calls for service. It was done so that all nine districts have the same amount of officers, and they handle the same amount of calls per officer. I think that's going to balance out a lot of it. But the biggest thing is just being more concise with your time. If you've got a half an hour, get out and park your car and walk foot, check into the businesses. But the biggest thing is with more supervisor oversight. Commanders are going to have to hold the sergeants and lieutenants accountable to oversee the officers and ensure that they're doing these things when they call. They've got to do checks and balances. They call out foot, look at their body-worn camera to see if they are walking foot. Those are things that we have to look at, because I think we're not that far away from having enough free time to walk. We'll get there eventually, but I think also, as we reduce crime, we continue to reduce crime, it's going to take less, means we'll need less and less detectives to, if we're investigating less crimes, it'll get us a chance to put more officers on the street. Civilianization is going to get us to the point where we're going to be able to put more officers on the street that are now currently in administrative jobs. We're going to balance out our shifts when we bid for leave. So, we're losing a lot of officers on the Charlie shift, which is 3:00 to 11:30. We want to add more officers on there, because more people will work overtime on Baker shift during the day than they will on night work. So, if we balance out that shift and we allow the daytime overtime, you're going to get more production out of that shift, because you don't have officers working overtime and they're working 12 and 18 hours. So, those are all part of the things with the smart policing. But anything else that we can, we constantly visit other agencies to see what they're doing, to give their units time to get out of the car and walk foot, or community engagement. It may only take 10 minutes to get out and do a business check. So, those are the things that we're going to continue to push, but community policing is my number-one priority. It's always been my number-one priority since I've been here.
Thank you. I have more questions when we get to the next round.
Just going to go down the road. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to stay along with the questions that my colleagues have asked, mainly community policing because of the, excuse me. I want to stay in line with the conversations in terms of community policing, given the areas that I do represent. Our recent consent decree hearing said that we were behind on it, so I want to know what measures are we taking to catch up and be there, because I hear both ways. Trust is one issue, but also physical presence is another, but also genuine relationships with community is important.
Yeah. There's going to be a few changes around in the command, but there's also going to be more oversight. There's going to be someone, another professional staff that's going to go into that unit, go in to oversee community policing for our micropolicing plans. So, we're going to add more oversight, and we just have to hold our commanders more accountable for having the officers get out of the car, not the same three or four officers that are NCOs that go to every single community meeting or the ones walking foot. It's got to be every single officer. When we went to New York, I was part of the contingent that went to New York to see what they were doing with their neighborhood policing. That's where the concept of neighborhood coordination officers came from. But the concept was, every single officer becomes a neighborhood coordination officer, not just the three or four that are in the unit. And the biggest thing is just getting them out of the cars, getting them into the community meetings. And it's easy to do, because if the major, say, the major goes to a community meeting, bring in the post officer. Don't you want to know who's working your post? And bring the officer in. Once they get in there and they see that it's more of a relaxed atmosphere, they introduce themselves, they say what they need to say, and they get out to the community, and then people recognize them. I also want to get our officers in the schools. One of the things that came up yesterday in the meeting that we were at last night was reading partners. That's an easy way to get our officers to connect with the young people. I did it where you spend an hour a week, half an hour, 45 minutes a week with a young person tutoring him in the school, him or her in the school. So, get our officers in the school a little bit more. School police are in there, but there's also things we can do to connect with our young people, because you see the young people in school, and then you see them out in the neighborhood, and they say, "Hey, that's Officer such and such." Different things like that. LA had a very interesting thing, that they actually made baseball cards with the Dodgers on one side and the police officer on the other. It was pretty cool. They did it years ago. So, maybe we can do something like that, something where we get our officers out in the communities more. And again, the thing that's going to help a lot is the redistricting, because no longer is one district handling the majority of the calls. The Northeast used to get almost 20%, 30% of the calls for service. That has now been balanced out. So, those are the type of things that we have to basically, not just ask the officers, but we've got to force them to do, because if we don't, we're never going to get out of the consent decree, because we're behind in community policing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Commissioner.
You too, sir.
I don't have the same kind of questions that my colleagues have. We talk a lot. You sit before my committee all the time. I've asked you every question I can think of. The one that I probably have not asked you, and I'll ask you now, is what can we do to help you be successful? You know, this council really wants to see you succeed. We need our department to do well. So, what can we do to help you be successful?
Yes, sir. I think the biggest thing you can do is help us with all the wraparound services for our young people, because those are the ones that are being victimized. Those are the ones that are really not getting a fair shot. They're going out, you see they're graduating, and there's got to be some type of discipline for anybody, but for young people especially, because if you go out and you steal a car and there's no discipline, next thing, you're doing a carjacking, and then you get a felony record, and then you're scarred for life with the felony record. So, I think we have to do those type of things, continue to work on the group violence reduction strategy. And then, if we, we might want to visit something with the handgun violations. Make a, I don't know if a mandatory sentence is the right word, but something where if, and I'm not saying about the length of the sentence, just the fact that if they know they carry a gun on a second or third conviction, that they're going to go to jail for a certain period of time, it may make somebody think twice about carrying a gun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Interim Commissioner Worley, notwithstanding reduction in violent crime and implementation of the consent decree and that balance being the most important thing, can you talk about what the strategy is to deal with the increase in auto thefts, specifically Hyundai's and Kia's? And can you also talk about, and I'd like specific data on the number of club devices that have been issued, how many are remaining, and what is the strategy to re-up that supply to continue the further reduction in those numbers?
Yeah. We have issued over 3,000 clubs, and we want to continue to encourage individuals who have Hyundai's and Kia's to get the update. But even if you get the update, we talked about this today at ComStat, even if you get the update, you should use a club, because what will happen is, they see the Hyundai and Kia, there's a little stickered, I think, they give you for if you get the update, but it's the felony record. So I think we have to do those type of things, continue to work on the, the group violence reduction strategy. And then if we, we might want to visit something with the handgun violations, make a, I don't know if a mandatory sentence is, is the right word, but something where if, and I'm not saying about the length of the sentence, just the fact that if they know they carry a gun on a second or third conviction that they're going to go to jail for a certain period of time, it may make somebody think twice about carrying a gun.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Interim Commissioner Worley, notwithstanding reduction in violent crime and implementation of the consent decree and that balance being the most important thing, can you talk about what the strategy is to deal with the increase in auto thefts, specifically Hyundai's and Kia's? And can you also talk about, and I'd like specific data on the number of club devices that have been issued, how many are remaining, and what is the strategy to re-up that supply to continue the further reduction in those numbers?
Yeah. We, we have issued over 3,000 clubs, and we want to continue to encourage individuals who have Hyundai's and Kia's to get the update. But even if you get the update, we talked about this today at ComStat, even if you get the update, you should use a club. Because what will happen is they see the Hyundai and Kia, there's a little stickered, I think they give you for, if you get the update, but it's a tiny sticker and the car thief's not looking at the sticker. So if they don't see a club, they may still break into the car and try to steal the car, and it becomes an attempted auto theft, which counts the same. So we want to continue, we would like to buy more clubs. We also have to, and Hyundai's and Kia's are only about 33 percent of the stolen autos. It's another 67 percent of other vehicles that are being stolen. And what we're finding is that we continue to arrest young people over and over again for these stolen autos. So that's the, that's the biggest push is that we have to hold the young people accountable. But we have to increase our car stops. We have to look for the vehicles that look suspicious, check the tags to see if it's a stolen car. All those different things and be more proactive as we drive through the neighborhoods to pay attention to try to eliminate a stolen auto before it actually happens. I know some of our officers have even knocked on the doors of Hyundai and Kia owners to give them a club. And I'd like to buy more and say, I don't know if we have any left at all. Do we?
Yeah, that was the, the second part of, we're all out?
Yes, sir.
And, and the last part of the question, so what's the strategy to get more of those and continue distributing those?
We're probably going to have to purchase them on our own because of the, we've got a lawsuit against Hyundai and Kia. So I'm not so sure they're going to give us more. So we might have to purchase those on our own.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, if I can follow up with the CIA after about what the strategy is on that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Interim Commissioner Worley, I just want to go back to what you were talking about, community policing and connecting that to officer discipline if that does not happen. Since you've been interim commissioner, I've raised several concerns to you about the response times as it relates to 911 and officers actually showing up in the community. Can you walk me through what would be the change that you would implement if you, if you become confirmed as a commissioner that you're not implementing now?
Well, I think we are doing it now because if there's a complaint, it goes to Internal Affairs. If there's, the biggest thing we have to do is if you get, if you're unsatisfied with any service that an officer gives you or doesn't give you, you need to call 911 again and tell them you want a supervisor, make a supervisor's complaint. The supervisor will come out. If the officer's neglectful in his duty, that gets put in blue team by that supervisor and then Internal Affairs investigates it. So there's no excuse for officers not coming to a call. If you call 911, you get an officer. If you don't, then that's our job to correct that and hold the officer and the supervisor accountable.
So that, that's a very nice, that's a good approach. However, that has not been happening in Southern District. And, now you know, now you know I don't play that. Thank you. So having, having that response time, having that response time within the districts in the community over the past month and a half, there have been six that we have raised up to you. And I know a few other council members have raised them to you as well. And so I'm wondering what else could be done because there's a large agency that you are representing, and there's going to be a shift in regard to the apathy and lack of, lack of transparency within the department. So it's not going to be just a night and day to bring it, you know, to bring it live. What are you going to do to ensure that we phase into that as quickly as possible?
Well, if the, the ones that are brought to me have been turned over and they could be under investigation right now. I don't ask about them once I turn them over because eventually what would happen is, for example, if they are under investigation and they get a punishment that goes to a trial board, it may end up coming back to me for the final determination. So I turn it to Internal Affairs, they do the investigation, and then they can hand out the discipline to the officers. So most of those ones that you sent, if they look at the body worn camera and find the officer, like a couple that we know from Brooklyn Day that didn't happen, those are, those are already under investigation. So every single time we get a complaint that goes to Internal, that's why we have to make sure we have a full complement of detectives and detective sergeants in Internal Affairs to investigate every complaint. It just doesn't happen in 30 days. Our average, our average time, I believe, is almost 90 days if I'm not mistaken for, 119 days to complete a internal investigation. So those are probably under investigation and the officers will receive some type of punishment, depending if it's their first offense, second offense, third offense. And the way it works, if it's a third or fourth offense, there's a matrix that you go through. If you get, say, for example, you might get a letter of reprimand, then it goes to loss of leave. And it could go all the way to termination if you can, determination if you continue to, continue to the same behavior without correcting it.
How would the community and our council member know what the outcome of that investigation is?
We can actually, I don't know how that, what is the, can you explain that? How do the community find out the outcome in Internal?
Yes, ma'am. So whoever the complainant is, is who will get a response back is to what the finale is. We have an online portal now that any, anybody from the public can file a complaint. That'll give them a unique identifier. At any time, they can go in, put the unique identifier into the system. It'll tell them the status of the case, where it is along the way. But the information goes back to the actual complainant who made the case. That's who we would have on file and that's who would give the response.
And, and there's also a complaint testing program as part of the consent decree. It's mandatory to make sure that the complaints that the citizens make actually get to Internal Affairs to ensure the checks and balances are done for those officers.
I'll save my questions for the next round.
Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question to the commission, well, if you are the commissioner soon, I'm getting a lot of calls, like 311 calls and 911 calls in reference to quality of life crimes. And when those officers do get those calls and not getting out, and not writing any citations or anything of that nature, I heard early on that, you know, you're supposed to work closely with the state's attorney's office in reference to getting those citations out. But we're, we're not seeing that. And there's a great percentage of individuals are saying that when the police do pull up, they're just sitting in the cars.
That, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That is one of the biggest complaints that I've had, and it's the biggest things that I'm pushing, is getting them out of the cars. If we do get the quality of life complaints, there's a process to go through it. The first presence and then warning. If a warning doesn't do it, then they get out and they should be writing the criminal citation. We did write several of them, and because it's a new process, we had to send those back. They never made it to the state's attorney because we have to, had to correct them.
Are we training, are we training?
Yes.
For that?
Yes. And the state's attorney has done something really, really good for all of us is the fact that they've given, they're going to give us a card that has the exact wording of the charges. So that, because what happens is citations, we, we've finally moved everything to digital, and then now citations are getting handwritten because we have to give them a copy. So we've got to get the officers back into handwriting the citations. And you have to write it word, you have to write the wording correctly or it gets voided. So the state's attorney is giving us a card to keep in our pockets so we have the exact wording to do. But we've got to do a better job of giving citations. And when we do give them, we have to make sure to correct because it doesn't do any good if it's not, if we're not turning over a correct citation to the state's attorney because it's not about the punishment part, it's about, most of those quality of life, those people need services other than law enforcement or jail time. They need either community service, education, or drug treatment. So those are the, that's the purpose of that. Now, obviously, if they don't adhere to those processes, once they give the opportunity to do them, then it could escalate to something more and jail time. But we've got to do a better job of it. We are training, and I think you'll see some improvements. It's a brand new strategy. And like with everything, when we started body worn cameras, we were bad at it. But after a couple of months, we got the hang of it. And we've been sending, for example, our, our records management system. They review every citation. If it's wrong, they send it back to the officer and the supervisor with how to correct it, how to write it properly so that they don't make that same mistake again.
What's the timeline that you're getting set to have that corrected?
It's in the process. Everyone that's over, that was written wrong has been sent back to the officer. And then what we'll do is we'll look and make sure that if we have a repeat offender, like if the same officer continues to write them incorrectly, then we can send them back to the academy for training. Or if it's, we, we just have to investigate to make sure that they know what they're doing. But the biggest thing is making sure that when the supervisor, when the officer writes it, that it's exactly right so that we can turn it over to the, turn it over to the state's attorney for what they have to do once they appear in court.
Cool. And the other question I have, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. I know that when you had taken the office of acting police commissioner, I remember there was a question that was raised to you on, like, what is your plan for Baltimore on changing the trajectory of the police department, things of that nature. And I know many times you referred back to what Commissioner Harrison had in place already. And I remember having a conversation with the police department at a public safety hearing that, you know, I understand the police commissioner's plan at the time, I understand the mayor's plan at the time, but I also understand the constituents' plan. And the constituents' plan is that we want results like now. What I'm seeing right now is that in my community is still tenuously, what's happening is open air drug market. And police are basically sitting right there in their cars and watching these transactions take place. It's disheartening to me because I get many phone calls and they're asking me, like, why aren't the police getting out of the cars and approaching these individuals? I really have no answer to give them because I'm not the police department. But what I'm asking you to do is take more initiative of asking these officers, getting these officers to do their jobs. Get out, approach the situation, observe, be more of a presence to the community, and maybe we can solve some of the issues that we see that's plaguing our neighborhood in a better light because the community isn't seeing it. And I'm getting calls all types of night in reference to these open drug markets. I'm getting video, I have video footage today that was sent to me of drugs, you know, transactions going on right in front of their home, and the police is like, literally across the street. So we've really got to change the trajectory because that's what we're seeing in our neighborhoods, particularly mine's.
Now, I, I agree. The officers have to get out of the car and they have to address it. What happens with a lot of, a lot of the districts is we rely on the district action team to do all that type of enforcement, and that's not the right strategy because we don't have enough of them. So the officers need to get out and investigate the drug dealing. We make the arrests for the drug dealing, but we also use our federal, state, and local partners to help do some of these, the high level investigations. But the street level dealing, the officer can address it. I addressed it when I was an officer and my, when I worked the Western District. And the biggest thing is getting them out of the car, going up, speaking to the individuals. But if you're sitting there and they're brazen enough to do that in front of you, you need to take action because it's, they're not having any respect for you or the community. And it's our job to make those arrests when someone's dealing drugs in front of us. And we have, I, I know my, two of my lieutenant colonels here, they've been watching the cameras that are around a certain area and calling out to the commander because it's no sense for us to call, for a lieutenant colonel calls the major and makes the major address it. Because we watch, we have cameras in our offices, we can watch certain areas. And I know they've been doing it every single day. We addressed it at ComStat about what are your officers doing in this area when they're clearly dealing drugs. So we pushing it down, and that's, we just got to keep driving it home to them because for the longest time, we weren't able to enforce the drug activity. But now we can, and there's no excuse not to.
And, and you know, at the commission, I'm not, I'm not.
Councilman, so I'll let you slip in a second question. So we're going to, we're going to hold on, on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And so first, I also want to acknowledge that Acting Commissioner, along with the mayor, went around, did a lot of community engagement sessions and answered a lot of questions from the community. And we want to follow, follow that lead as well. And so instead of what we normally do and allow the committee to ask as many questions as they like, we're going to turn over into public testimony to give the public an opportunity, those who've missed those meetings, an opportunity to speak. The, the rule when testifying before the committee is you speak to the committee. You don't address anybody else in the room, you're addressing the committee and the committee alone. And I'd ask that you keep your comments brief, and we're going to all be respectful. That is the main rule here, is to be respectful. And so I'll start off by calling up former mayor Jack Young.
Thank you.
You have to hit the right button until it lights up red.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Thank you. First of all, thank you for allowing me to come here this evening to speak in favor of Acting Commissioner Worley. I've known him for the last 20, about 28 years. Found him to be very competent, a very good man who gets back to you on all of your calls. He never missed a call from me, and I called him when he was on vacation, and he answered the call. He is a person that was born and raised in the great city of Baltimore. And that's a plus for us that we have someone who is homegrown, come up through the ranks as an officer, lieutenant, major, and you know his history. I think that he's the right one to lead this organization. I was encouraged to hear him say that he wanted to get us out of this consent decree as quick as possible because this consent decree has cost the city of Baltimore lots of money. And that money can be spent in other things like recreation centers and more equipment for our police officers. And those kind of things that we want to make sure that our young people are getting the tools that they need to be successful. And maybe we can get some of them to become police officers. I was happy to hear him talk about reinstituting the cadet program. You know, that's something that was dear to my heart because a lot of young people who was in the good now power program became police officers. And this man here, I'm telling you, he's the right one to lead this organization. And I'm asking this council to make sure that you confirm him because I believe he's the right one that can get us out of consent decree. I believe he's the one that can get our police officers out the cars and getting this community policing where it should be. I believe in community policing. I knew every officer that was in our community. And I believe he knows that because he grew up in Baltimore. He know about community policing. And I believe he's the right man for the job. So thank you for this opportunity and allowing me to come first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, State's Attorney Ivan Bates.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. First of all, I just want to say thank you for having me, give me this opportunity to speak. One of the things, being the state's attorney, I cannot, and we cannot be successful in fighting crime if we don't have a good partner. For us, our partner has to be the police. We are the, the partners. One of the things that you look at when you're looking at a partner, you look at the individual's heart, you look at their organization. We all know the history of Baltimore City Police Department because we've lived it, we've seen it. Back in 1995, I was a young prosecutor. Back in 1998, interim Commissioner Worley was a young officer. Our paths crossed. I left in 2002 and he stayed. For 25 years, he saw the good and the bad of the department. But he knows the department. He's seen what works and he's seen what hasn't. When I came back to the state's attorney's office, one of the things that I told the citizens is I had the experience of understanding what needed to be done in that organization. Just as I understood what needed to be done in that organization, state's attorney's office, he, interim Commissioner Worley, understands that as well. We've sat down, we've talked. I didn't really know him that well, but we began to develop that relationship, that bond, whether we go to lunch once a month. Our executive teams meet once a month. We talk, we discuss things. What you clearly understand is the most important part, he has a heart for the citizens and the people of Baltimore. We talk about family. He gives me advice on raising my young daughter because he's raised a couple of his. We talk about our love for baseball. We talk about what will work and what won't work in terms of policing and holding criminal element responsible. But we also talk about a need and want to never ever go back to what we saw happen previously within the Gun Trace Task Force and the negative consequences of policing in Baltimore City. At the end of the day, I'm asking you to give me a partner that I can look at, I can depend on, and so that I can continue working for the citizens to fight crime and confirm interim commissioner Richard Worley to be our next police commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Councilwoman Clark.
Oh, I need my, yeah. Leave it there for me. Leave it there for me, I got necks. Thank you so much. Yes. That this was too tall, but we never had the budget to do anything about it. Yes. I was told to keep my remarks to two minutes. And I'm, I wrote them out as a result. But before I begin my two minutes, I would like to say this. I agree that there needed to be meetings in advance before any announcements were made about who the mayor was going to introduce as his candidate. But it's been a long time anyway, getting to where we're going to get at Halloween or maybe a little earlier than that. at Halloween or maybe a little earlier than that. And a lot of things that we're talking about today, I'm going to guess that the Colonel does not have, right now, the ability to do. Because there is no Commissioner. And I just think we need to be doing something. There's nothing you can do except help this process along this evening. I'm just saying, it's been a long time waiting and we're all very looking forward. So if I may just read at you, it'll be two minutes, I hope. Hi, Councilwoman. Nobody to keep count. Mr. Chairman and members of the committee and of the Baltimore City Council, thank you for this opportunity to express my support of the Mayor's nomination of Richard Worley as Police Commissioner of Baltimore City. I know you all know how you're voting, but I wrote this for this committee and its vote. For seven years, I partnershiped closely with Captain and then Major Worley from the 4th City Council District I represented to the Northern and Northeast District where he so ably and responsibly led. Special thanks as well to Commissioner Michael Harrison, who got us this far and deserves a lot of appreciation for his hard work or we wouldn't be here tonight. Thanks also, and I want to extend publicly my own personal gratitude and sympathy to Ms. Crystal Gonzalez, who has basically reached the heart of the matter and of the city of Baltimore to help all of us realize the, the deep grief that this whole situation of crime has created throughout our community and how important it is for us to get back to that new normal, to a new normal of safety and healing. I admire Colonel Worley because this son of Baltimore gets it, does his homework and regards our officers and citizens as respected colleagues with whom he shares professional and personal responsibility and service. If this is a partnership, so let it be. City Council colleagues, I know you spend so much of your time and work so hard to understand, keep up with, and struggle to resolve constituent problems. In my experience, Colonel Worley has done the same in tracking crime, its victims, and its violators, while meanwhile fielding those day-to-day citizen calls of personal urgency. In our seven years partnership, Colonel Worley would often be alerting me to a problem just as I was trying to call him up to tell him about it myself. He's on the, he's on the job all the time and that job is a lot of things at the same time, all of which he, in my experience, he has done so well. In more recent years, Colonel Worley has expanded his knowledge and experience of Police Department responsibilities with a series of leadership positions in operations, criminal investigation, patrol, homeland security, the Public Integrity Bureau. I don't know how you got all those constituent jobs done, but you did. But first and foremost, Colonel Worley is prepared and committed to partner with our hardest-hit neighborhoods first. And they will lead the rest. To review and embrace best practices of partner engagement and agreement to fight back our shameful record of mass shootings, gun proliferation and stolen vehicles. And to restore in partnership the positive normal of, of safety and protection which all residents and neighborhoods deserve and require citywide. In the interest of time, dear neighbors, I'm wrapping up, honey. Just give me my space. In the interest of time, dear neighbors and colleagues, go O's, vote Worley, and thanks for your attention and consideration. Mary Pat.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Next up, Councilman Stokes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Ashana Totova. Councilmembers, thank you for giving me a minute. I had 30, Mary Pat took 29 and a half. But, but we're okay. I stopped by, not to be presumptuous in advising you how to vote, I'm not about to do that. Why I stopped by was because I wanted to give you firsthand some character comments about Richard Worley. Richard was Captain first at Northern and then Major at Northeast. Both parts of the district that I represented at the time were in those police precincts. And I don't know Richard Worley professionally by the fact that he was serving there. I know Richard Worley by the community leadership, who told me over and over again, Carl, this is a man that we can work with. This is a man we trust. This is the man that we feel comfortable with. They told me that whenever Worley gave his word, he tried to keep it. And that there were circumstances that might have felt like he had to change it. He came to the community first and talked to them about why there had to be a change and worked it out. I don't have a lot more to say. He's a good guy, but that's not why I'm standing with you. He's a better police officer. He's gone through the ranks from top, from bottom to top. He was top coming out of his class in 98. But, but he's just been really, really strong out there in the field and in the community. And leadership, community leadership, has told me over and over and over again that this is the right guy. Good luck, sir. Thank you.
Next up, Bill Shiflett.
My name is Bill Shiflett. I am a member of the agency. And I took my day off to come down here to support Commissioner Worley for a couple of reasons. I was critically injured several years ago in an incident at work. And there were few people, a lot of command staff, that reached out to me and my family during the time that it took to heal. And then Colonel Worley took a lot of time to be with me and my family. He made sure that we were taken care of. He made sure that our well-being was looked after. And best of all, he made sure that I could come back to work, which is a good thing. The rank and file need the continuity of a person that is a homegrown leader. If you guys don't know that, you guys are homegrown, all of you. We need the homegrown leader that Deputy Worley brings to the, to the table. I'm imploring you to support him. I think a lot of you do. But the agency needs a person like Deputy Worley at this time in history to carry us through to the end of where we're trying to go. And as Councilman Stokes said, this is the right man right now to carry us through that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here and thank you for your service. Next up, I'm not sure if he's still here. I know provided written testimony, Mark Anthony Thomas.
Good evening, Councilman. I lead the Greater Baltimore Committee. Our organization during my tenure has taken a more active role in being a partner on public safety issues. And it's been a pleasure to actually work with the Acting Commissioner to not only just orient me into Baltimore. He had the pleasure of serving as the person who really gave me the driving tour within my first month of Baltimore, and I'll always remember that experience. But we've been working pretty closely to build trust and establish collaboration with his team and the broader public safety community as we really bring the business and civic leadership to support the efforts that will require all of us to make an impact. As part of our multi-year agenda, we've committed to two goals. Reducing gun violence in our communities and supporting the police in recruiting and retaining the force to carry out our mission. And obviously, we believe that collaboration is important. The GBC has actually met with the Commissioner and the Mayor, and he is strongly committed to working with us to deliver the goals that we've set. Under Commissioner Harrison's leadership, the department made tremendous progress in much-needed reforms, including improving operations, evolving the way policing happens in the city. And we're super confident that the Acting Commissioner can carry out those continued changes. And we look forward to working closely with him to make sure that happens. And so I stand here to say the GBC supports the confirmation of Richard Worley as our next Commissioner of the Baltimore Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Natalie Preston.
Good afternoon, good evening, Council Chairman, Council President, all elected officials. Commissioner Worley. Thanks for the opportunity to speak in conjunction with the nomination for Commissioner Worley, Acting Commissioner Worley, to be nominated as the next Commissioner for Baltimore City Police Department. I stand here as the Vanguard President for the Baltimore City Police Department to state that we, as the Vanguard, express our support in nominating Interim Commissioner Worley as the next Commissioner for Baltimore City Police Department. As Commissioner Worley and I have met more times since he's been named Interim Commissioner than I have with the last, the former Commissioner. Just to discuss several issues, not only involving internal issues, but external issues with the community where information is brought to me by the community members and I relay that information back to Interim Commissioner Worley. Those concerns have been addressed. And based on that and my interaction with Commissioner Worley and being a former subordinate of Commissioner Worley, I know the hard work and dedication that he has put into being the Commissioner. There is no day or time that I cannot call him or email him and get a response. So with that being stated, and he talked about morale when he did his presentation, morale is very much needed in the Police Department. And I believe that Commissioner Worley, at the head of, the helm of the Police Department, could lead the officers and the other, ever members in building a morale which will translate into the community policing, which is one of the deficiencies of the consent decree. So I stand here as the Vanguard President and offer my consent and nominee in Commissioner Worley as the next Police Commissioner for Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Daniel Burgess.
Thank you for your time, everyone. I'm here on behalf of the community. My name is Daniel Burgess. I work for a youth organization called Grow Homes in Brooklyn, Maryland. I'm literally five minutes away from the mass shooting. I've been working in the community since 2015. I work particularly with at-risk youth. It's a work that I'm very passionate about. The reason I'm here is not because I have disdain against the nominee. It's not because I have a personal grudge or I have anything negative to say about him. He may be the best man for the job. The reason I'm here is because our City Council has failed to inform the community and has failed to get the community an opinion or a chance to learn more about him. All of the wonderful things that these folks have said, it would have been great if they could have said it in Brooklyn. It would have been great if they could have said it to some of the faces and the individuals who at night, every single day worry about how their community and the betterment of their well-being should be. This almost seems like a club, right? It seems like a club of people who make opinions based on their interactions with each other and leave us out. And that is a disservice to every single member of the community. We've thrown a word around a lot, and the word that we're throwing around is trust. How do you trust who you don't know? I didn't have the privilege of going to school with him or serving on the board or all of these. I don't know this man from a hole in the wall. And I feel bad because I'm here going against who may be, very well may be our solution. So instead of going about whether he should or shouldn't be, I'd like to have an ask in representation for the community. When you hold processes like this in the future, this is, this is real community engagement. And the ask is, and the selection process is such, this should be made public with all the experienced candidates who apply. If you had 2,000 people apply and you narrowed it down to five, make those five applications available to the public. This is a marriage between community and state. Community needs to be involved. Any type, anytime there's a, a relationship, then there has to be communication. My next ask, a number of the final candidates range from three to five. With such a, I mean, it's worse than Democrat or Republic. You know, it's, you, you only get one, you don't get a choice. You don't get to say, it's just, this is who the person is. And I understand it's your decision, but Baltimore is our home. When, when, when that Brooklyn 30, when that Brooklyn 30 happened, I spent the entire week on my phone, day and night, calling and checking in with kids over and over and over again. I can't tell you how many mothers I talked to. I can't tell you how many kids I talked to now that are still dealing with these issues. We should be involved. And I'm not going to sit here and act as if this man has all the solutions. We keep hearing about the consent decree, consent decree, consent decree. Read all 229 pages of it. Judge Bredor should be in here. Judge Bredor should have something to do with the, the process of whether this man is selected or not. He wrote it, right? And I keep, I keep hearing about the numbers and how the numbers are miscued because it's certain things, again, I read all 229 pages multiple times. We all, we all know that. I have some very familiar faces in here from my work with trying to partner with the Police Department and Commissioner Harrison. But my point on that is, if we know that in order to fulfill the requirements for the consent decree requires 10,000 officers to hit certain numbers, right? And we only have 2,000, does that mean, well, we just can't do it? Well, why don't we balance that out? Why don't we use those numbers in forecasts? If it's supposed to be, based on the consent decree, two NCOs in every single community, but we don't have enough staff for two, what's the ratio? Do we have enough staff for 1.75? And if it's the 1.75, who are the 1.75er and why are we not holding them accountable? It's almost like we got a, a document drawn up that we knew we couldn't fulfill the requirements of. And because we can't fulfill the requirements, we just say, well, I can't do anything. That's almost like my wife coming to me and saying, Daniel, you're obligated to take me out once every single year to the, the best restaurant in the world. And then I say, baby, I can't afford to take you to the best restaurant in the world, so I won't take you anywhere at all. Why don't I take her to Shoney's? Why don't you show me what's working? Why, and I'm not speaking to him specifically. With all of this time, why aren't there any numbers that match the, the shortage of officers that we're falling for? But I'm going to get back to the ask. The ask is, the resumes of applicants be submitted and made available to the public 30 days prior to the decision being made. It's not that we don't trust him, we don't trust you. You haven't informed us enough. You haven't made us a part of the process. You act as if we don't care or our opinion doesn't matter. We want to champion a hero. We want to get behind a hero, but who gets behind who they don't know? This is a serious issue that we're facing here in Baltimore. Next, I'm asking that the policing history of each candidate be made available to the public for 30 days or prior to the decision. That's how you trust. Because I don't care who you nominate, you still need us to do your job. You still need me to do your job. Nobody's going from 4th Street to 10th Street, besides myself, in this room. And of course, my Councilwoman, because she does that. She's, she's on 4th to 10th, out there. She's, she's on Fourth to 10th, out there on a regular basis. Next, the Police Commissioner appointed that's, that's held, he should be venned in three separate Town Hall meetings, at least one week apart. I was here the last time the Police Commissioner Harrison did that blitz, where he went to nine community Town Hall meetings in one whole week. And I had my phone in my pocket, wasn't supposed to be doing it, but I was recording the whole thing, and I was listening to everything he was saying, I was taking notes. And before I could digest what he was saying in the one Town Hall meeting, it was on the Murvo. It was on to the next. So I couldn't even properly prepare myself to ask questions and address. Why are we rushing a process that should be carefully taken, that should be carefully decided upon? Why are we in such a hurry to make a drastic change for a community and a city that suffered so long? We've been suffering for decades, but we're making a decision in weeks? Let's be realistic, it doesn't even sound right, okay? Now here we go again. The next ask, after you're being venned in those Town Halls, only by community members, they should also hold for those three to five candidates a debate, but not with community members, because Shorty and everybody else, it'll go wild, right? But the council members, the council members that have to make these decisions, they should be the ones asking the tough questions for the public and for the community to see. I fell in love with my Councilwoman all over again because of the questions that she asked. And when I go back to my Brooklyn community, anything she asks me to do, I'm going to do it. As much as she needs me to advocate, I'm going to advocate because she advocates for me. She advocates for us. We are sick and tired of blank faces and check boxes representing our community. And you're leaving us out of the loop. How can you ask us to be connected and care if you don't address us? If you don't treat us like people? If you don't treat us like what we say or our opinions matter? We know we don't make the decision, but let us feel involved. Let us feel connected. Let us feel as if we are important. There is no trust without a relationship. He has a relationship, she has a relationship, they have relationships. I don't got no relationship. I don't have, I don't know this man. I don't know this man from a hole in the wall. And no, he doesn't have to come to me, all right? No, he doesn't have to come talk to me. But if this is your candidate, make a minute and a 30-second infomercial statement. Put the statement on social media platforms. Put some information out to where the public can vent or see the candidate or the, the person that's going to be running in this office for the next four years or so. The, the, two more requests, that the Town Halls are recorded and released to the public viewing with less, with no less than a week for us to see. If this, not on C-SPAN, not coming on 3 o'clock at night in some vintage channel, but social media platforms, YouTube, the things that the 14-year-olds and the 15-year-olds in my community watch. Because if we leave them out now, when they're 24, 25, they won't know what a City Council member is. They won't know the difference between the Mayor and the Police Commissioner. I deal with it every day. They don't know what these things represent. So you're, you're, you're widening the gap and you're making my job a lot harder, which I get paid probably less half of what everyone in this room gets paid to do their jobs, okay? And then, and then my, my last, my last requirement is that the neighborhoods that are most affected by crime, when we talk about bringing a Police Commissioner in, and it doesn't have to be all, maybe the, the three, definitely Brooklyn, that candidate should spend some time in that community. I'm not talking about the infamous walkthroughs, I'm not talking about the Town Hall a week before. Spend three months. Go to the, or a month, go to the high school. We talk about community engagement, that's just a word. Real community engagement. If you want to engage in Brooklyn, don't set up a Town Hall when parents have to work two, three jobs and they have to let their employers know a week in advance that they need time off so they can be to the Town Hall, or they're fighting traffic, or they gotta run, ride two buses because you have to ride two buses to get to certain areas in the community. Have them come to Ben Franklin High School and say, hey, Ben Franklin High School, when is your next back-to-school event? I want to be at your back-to-school event because parents are going to be there. I want to, I want to offer, when is your next big volleyball game? When is the next, uh, 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 City of Refuge Church? They do amazing work in the community, mega church. When is your next church or social event? I want to be there. Again, I'm going to finish up real quickly. I have no problems whatsoever with this gentleman. He might be the right person for the job, I don't know. And I feel like this is a disservice to him done on behalf of the Council and, and the rest of the staff by flying him up here and asking the people, the people, to adapt to a change like this after we just got over Harrison, after we just got over a Mayor on their way out, bringing the next Commissioner in. It's unfair, it's dishonest, it's dis genuine, and you're causing more harm to the reputation in the community than good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just as a point of, a point of clarity, so I just want to explain the, the typical process that's been in place when a Mayor does make a nomination and picks somebody, submits it to the Council. There's a, a small window in which the Council has the opportunity to host hearings like this. We can't go many months, otherwise the nomination becomes confirmed even without, even without that engagement. But I, I will say, and I applaud the Mayor's Office for scheduling, I believe it was seven different public Town Halls to bring the nominee around. But in addition to that, this nominee has also made himself available to anybody who's asked. I know I hosted a Town Hall last night. I asked them to do so, they did it. It was not one of the Mayor's Town Halls, but it was in addition to that, we had a few hundred people there at a senior center. And so this Commissioner's made himself available, and, and I'm sure will continue to do so because that's what he's done for his entire career. But we take the feedback and certainly if there are ideas to, to change that, please send them, send them over. And that is stuff that we will have to change within the City Charter and how that, how that process works. We can't just decide to hold things a certain way when the Charter describes how we have to confirm a nominee, whether it's for the Police Department, any city agency, or any of the Boards or Commissions.
Understood, and I, I'd like a chance to respond. That's exactly the problem, the process that you go about informing. We all know realistically, like, I'm going to keep it a stack with you, okay? We all know realistically, the members of our community don't have access to these platforms that you're making available. You know, I, I, I work with a community that isn't used to the norm, and that is Baltimore City's responsibility to keep those in the loop. It's almost like saying, we make it available for you to read if you don't know how to read. Now, I'm not saying you teach people how to read, I'm saying you do, you, you use different ways of making services like this available. I'm a community guy, and I just found out about this two days ago, okay? There is plenty of ways that you could reach the masses and focus on the, the communities that needed the most. How did you inform Brooklyn? How did you inform Brooklyn? How did you inform my community? It was nothing in Enoch Pratt Library, where all the regular Narcan training, where all the prostitutes and the junkies and the, and, and the dope fiends hang out. I didn't see anything, I didn't hear anything on the radio. If we can advertise and sell merchandise, how come we can't advertise a, a decision like this? This is, this is basic business. This is the basic methods in which we operate. If you, if you want to get your word out and you're saying that the methods that you're using are effective, then we wouldn't be here today. And this, this disconnect between community, and when I say be here today, I'm not talking about in this meeting, I'm talking about the disconnect between community and police. So find more effective methods, get more community members involved. Ask me what's the best way to reach the audience, because what you're doing isn't effective. I know, I can't reach this man. I don't know how to contact this man. They know me, the, the, the Police Department knows me, Ms. Brown knows me, Ms. Lindsey knows me. I've been very effective trying to reach Commissioner Harris. Ask me how many times she's had a conversation with me. Ask her how many times she's had a conversation with me. Ask them how many times I've came up to the Police Department and brought crab cakes. Ask them, ask them how many times I came up there just to have a, a, a minute to talk to them or their time and their attention. Unfortunately, the members of my community aren't resourceful as me, and they have to work nine to fives. So find better methods of making this thing available to the public so the public can be more informed and involved, and stop giving us the same old, same old. Thank you.
Next up, Tyronda Jones.
Good evening, everyone. I am Tyrone West. I'm the sister of Tyrone West. My brother was brutally executed 530 weeks ago, 3,711 days ago, 10 years ago. We've been living with this pain. And this pain started, and pretty much, when Worley was in office, and it's just sad, nothing changed. And it's just sad, we literally had to wait outside. We were here like 3:30, standing outside, but they filled the room with other people, you know, white shirts, everybody got to come sign up, we're standing out there. We always the first ones to go, but the last ones to come in the room. And when I say the first ones to go, our lives matter. Just like what happened in Brooklyn Home, Aleah's life mattered, the young man's life mattered, Brooklyn life mattered, my brother Tyrone West and all the victims of police brutality life mattered. And for Worley, we done been at every Town Hall meeting that he had. I'm switching my schedule, got my tires slashed and everything, did not miss a meeting. And to hear the same old thing, throwing it into internal investigation where the police are policing themselves, it's ridiculous. These are our lives, and we're just asking you to hear us. Why can't we pick our own Commissioner? How can Harrison, who left us, who failed us? He walked away and he gets to pick who's up next? Really? When will our vote matter? And it's just sad, like, we elect you guys, we take, go through the whole due process, and nobody listens to us. I'm tired of the dog and pony show, it's painful. You know, I brought up at the first Town Hall meeting about the Brooklyn Homes failure, and then when he started, when Mr. Worley started off, he was saying that, you know, the Baltimore City Police respects the constitutional, and then they also value life. They didn't value my brother's life, Aleah's life wasn't valued, Brooklyn Homes' lives wasn't valued, we are not valued. Our opinion's not even valued. So how can they set up here, how can we set up here and just accept this? It's unacceptable. I really feel like this city is going to hell with a whole can of gasoline poured on top. Something needs to be done. You really need to listen to us, and this process shouldn't be a rushed process, just like the brother said before me. This is something that should be at the table, especially when there's distrust. And then he always talks about, you know, on police engagement. Well, the last time I saw police engagement, Mackay was pretty much almost murdered. Mackay's life mattered as well. He left with police officers walking in the community, this young man almost wound up dead. And missed, and, and now suffering from missing from different organs that was pretty much interrupted unexpectedly. It's just sad, like, this has been happening for over 400-plus years, and at the end of the day, I'm going to keep on fighting, not just for my brother Tyrone West, but for all the victims of police brutality and murder, because it's all the same game. They don't care about us, they always use our pain for their game. It's time that you listen to the people, because we are the ones getting murdered. They're coming after the juveniles. Every day you hear about juveniles doing this bad, but you never hear about the good stuff that the juveniles are doing. It's sad, help the juveniles instead of trying to put them in a jail cell or underneath the ground, six feet in the dirt. Our lives matter, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Shorty.
Can you hear me? My name's Shorty, I'm a community activist, and I'm going to use my time the same way as everybody else. Ivan Bates left, and I know you said I ain't supposed to talk about people, but we're going to play this right here, all right?
Hello, this is David Schomburschini with the U.S. Attorney's Court for the District of Maryland. We spoke yesterday concerning your information and evidence about the Baltimore City Police Department. Returning your call from this morning, sorry, we have not written to you yet involving further instructions. You wanted to wait until we received your materials. We actually did receive them today. What we're going to do right now is we're trying to find the best contact at the U.S. Attorney's Office to send these materials to. Once we get that information, I will draft you an email with just more information, some contact info, so you can check it to see how the status of that's going. Just while, if you could, confirm your email address for me. I believe it's Dshortman@gmail.com, but if I have that mistaken, just give me another call. I think you have my number, but it's 410-962-3228. Talk to you soon. Bye.
You had a Town Hall last night, correct?
Yes, sir.
I was there, right? The conversation that we had last night was about policing in Baltimore City and Baltimore County, correct? The, the statement that I made was about Scott Schellenberger and about Baltimore City and Baltimore County Police Department, correct? I was kidnapped by the state. Baltimore City Police came to my house more than one occasion and put guns to my head. You understand what I'm saying? You ever got a gun put to your head? That's not a nice feeling. It's a helpless feeling. Baltimore City Police Department came in my house and your City Council, your Mayor, ain't did nothing. Ivan Bates left up out of here, this all on Ivan Bates' phone. You understand what I'm saying? Your state's attorney got this. The same way I did Schellenberger, Ivan Bates was going to get treated tonight. We not going to go down with this Jim Crow justice system that y'all got in place. We not checking all the boxes to lock up Black Baltimore. I want justice. So if he's sitting in the seat, or whoever's sitting in that seat, I got an internal, internal affairs investigation, ain't nobody did nothing about. Three times, your Baltimore City Police came in my house and put guns to my head. Activism isn't against the law. What they did to me is. Kidnapping me is. Not giving me justice is. And this is the place where I'm going to get mine. I got my display outside, art and activism, the art of protest. Go outside and look at it. Y'all tore my stuff off the walls of City Hall, like the walls of Jericho, I'm going to put it back up. You got criminal complaints against these officers. I got a Department of Justice and an FBI file, and y'all got that paperwork. If y'all confirming this man before y'all act on that paperwork, that makes you parties to a crime. Google search "Operation Greylord" in Chicago. Y'all doing the same thing here in Baltimore. I don't get no justice, I got more tapes to play.
Next up, Dan Hellerbaugh.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Before I read my prepared statement, I do want to address some of the questions that I appreciate that some of the Councilmembers brought up and want to connect it to some of the Town Hall meetings that we had, because we heard a lot of the same responses, which is what Interim Commissioner Worley wants his officers to do, but what he seems to be unable to get his officers to do or want to do. And there, there is a huge difference between the two. There's all, many things that all of us want the officers to do, but we need a leader that gets the job done. So, bad cops do not do bad things in front of good cops. This was Interim Commissioner Worley's response to a question about whether he was aware of the misconduct of his officers while Commander of the Northeast District from 2012 to 2016. Frankly, I was stunned, because the Gun Trace Task Force was operating often in that area at the time. Multiple high-profile in custody excessive force cases occurred in the precinct, community complaints skyrocketed, multiple officers were added to the prosecutors, no call list, and overtime abuse was rampant. How was that even possible? As a former school administrator, if I received a single complaint from a student or parent about one of my teachers or staff members, I was going to investigate what happened and take action if there was a problem. This statement also made me recall the, the dramatic testimony of a DEA agent during the trial of GTTF officers. Notoriously bad cop Wayne Jenkins and the agent were in their cars in a parking garage in Prince George's County surveilling the same suspect. Jenkins gets out of his car and taps on the agent's window, and after identifying themselves, tells the agents, agent, he's trying, doing his work to catch a monster, a pretty famous phrase that most of us know. Knowing full well that he was out of jurisdiction and acting well beyond his duties, Jenkins at that point had no compunction about revealing what he was doing, since there hadn't been any recourse for his actions from Baltimore Police Department. In fact, he had already been promoted the ranks for his aggressive policing. Good cop, bad cop, federal agent, it didn't matter who knew what was going on. Worley's feigned ignorance of the bad actors on his former force serves only to highlight the effects of his inaction. In fact, there aren't good cops or bad cops. There is a system that has allowed even those officers with the best of intentions to fail the citizens they have pledged to serve. to fail the citizens they have pledged to serve. Who we choose to be commissioner matters. Not only has the depth of his delusion about the conduct of his officers become apparent, but in five town hall meetings, Mr. Worley never articulated an actual plan to fix the culture of the department. Today, we are asking you, our council members, to take action for the benefit of the future of our city. I emphatically urge you to vote against the confirmation of interim Commissioner Worley. Thank you.
Jason Rodriguez. Jason Rodriguez. Next up, Adina Britt. If he comes down, he'll be heard, but I got this. If I need help, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Good evening. I have stood before this council on a number of occasions speaking out against police brutality and the collateral damage that results from it since my family were victims of such. I've spent the last month attending community meetings Mayor Scott had to introduce Worley to Baltimore residents. I already know Worley and attended all four meetings to ask about his plans to address police brutality and misconduct. Worley not only repeatedly dodged my request for specifics, but repeatedly passed the buck to some other entity, internal affairs, state's attorney, attorney general. I'm a tenured resident of Northeast District where Worley was a major in charge of, his words, 140 men from late 2012 through late 2016. During that time, there were at least eight documentable cases of police misconduct, brutality, and even homicide that occurred under his supervision. Cases of repeat violent offenders that wreaked havoc and terror through the community who were never admonished, reprimanded, nor held accountable, with one even being promoted to sergeant. In one case, a victim was brought to the district after being assaulted by some of these repeat violent offenders. When the names of these officers were revealed, even some of Worley's underlings exclaimed, "Again?" Yet Worley said in front of community members that he was unaware of any repeated misconduct while major of the Northeast District. He had no wherewithal of the conduct of some of his 140 men. So what makes him qualified and capable of handling a much larger number of personnel if he couldn't properly manage 140 in one district? The commissioner's salary is over 250,000 a year, and I'm telling you, he's already cost taxpayers of Baltimore much more than that in settlements paid out after his turning a blind eye and deaf ear to misconduct. The Brooklyn Homes debacle is the straw that broke the camel's back. From his tenure as major, six civil cases from one district in three years cost taxpayers $1,350,100 due to the same repeat violent offenders under Worley's failed leadership there. He brags that he's been a police officer for 25 years that were rife with failed policies and corruption that have only undergone name-changing with no real observable reforms that were promised. Stop and frisk begat jump-out boys, which begat GTTF, which begat district action teams. Worley represents more of the same failed policies, failed leadership, and corruption that has plagued BPD for decades. Just because he didn't get his hands dirty by directly participating in the activities of his officers who were repeat violent offenders, doesn't make him a good cop like he likes to allude to himself as. Worley is guilty by association...
Can you hold for one second, ma'am?
Worley is guilty by association...
If you wanna, if you wanna be recording, you're welcome to do so. You can just do so with the media and everybody else who's, who's videoing. You can't be reaching over into, um, uh, pass, pass the line there. So if you'd like to, you're welcome to come up here and video with the media. Go ahead.
Worley is guilty by association, has been accessory after the fact of police misconduct, and through inaction and denial has proven over and over he's unfit for the commissioner position. I'm against this nomination and just want city council to know Worley does not deserve to serve the citizens of Baltimore City. Thank you.
Bill, Bill Bleich. Oh, sorry, um, Mr. Rodriguez, you're here. Bill, you're up next.
Good evening, committee chair, vice chair, and, uh, committee members and citizens of Baltimore City. I'm here to ask for a vote of no confidence and to not, uh, confirm Richard Worley as our police commissioner. I have a history in that district of where he came from, um, from Northeast District. The death of Anthony Anderson, uh, the brutal assault of, uh, Mr. Abdul Salam, uh, the, uh, just rogue behavior of Officer Ruiz, Officer Chapman, um, the death of Tyrone West. And just recently at a town hall, Richard Worley said, "Well, you know," and I'm paraphrasing, "for me to know what was going on with over 140 officers, you know, uh, good, bad officers don't act bad in front of good officers." To me, it's BS. It's pure BS for him not to know, uh, what took place. Um, I've been in front of this council for numerous police commissioner confirmations. I told you, do not confirm Dr. Anthony Batch. You did, the city ended up in a riot. I told you, do not confirm Daryl De Souza. You confirmed him anyway, knowing that he was the shift commander in the Northeast when a lot of this terror was going on in that district, um, and you still confirmed him anyway, and he ended up in federal indictment. I've been in front of y'all, in front of, of this committee, uh, talking about Commissioner Michael Harrison. And I just wanted to go over the number real quick. Since he's been in office in 2019, uh, we had 348 homicides in 2019. 2022, we had 335. 2021, 337. And 2022, we had 333. And the citizens can tell you and, and can contest that they do not feel safe in this city, that this police department has not been reformed. I told you before that you could hire Deputy Dog to be the police commissioner in reference to the consent decree, and it wouldn't make a difference because it was just about following federal orders. Anybody could have been hired. A good candidate, someone that was good for Baltimore could have been hired at that time. Um, I'm thinking that maybe this is the history of, um, Mr. Worley, uh, you know, uh, not paying attention as to what's going on in his department because we see exactly what his particular demeanor, his MO is, in reference to a mass shooting that took place in Brooklyn Homes. If you confirm Richard Worley, you are disrespecting the family of Tyrone West with over 350 West Wednesdays to ask for accountability in our police department. You are, you are obviously disrespecting Ms. Gonzalez, who lost her daughter in Brooklyn Homes when nobody responded, when Foxtrot knew, when, when 911 calls were going out, when people knew what was going on, when your social media division to the, to, to the police department knew at the time that, uh, there was a party that was, uh, that Brooklyn Day was being, uh, organized. This, 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 this shows you immediately exactly what we're going to get. I'm asking the council to please do not confirm this. Send this back to the mayor. Force the mayor to do a national search, a local search, have folks within the police department. I told you before, I wanted to see a black woman become the police commissioner and break the glass ceiling of our police department because we're dealing with internal racism. I just finished speaking to, uh, Michael Harrison, Police Commissioner Michael Harrison, just recently, before he left. And at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, we were talking about Nigerian officers and Puerto Rican officers that were facing internal discrimination. And he told me, Jason and Yolanda Poli, because he was talking to both of us at the same time, he told us that unfortunately, I have not been able to get a grip of the internal racism inside the police department. If you confirm Richard Worley, you're gonna continue with the internal racism within the police department. It has not been gotten a hold of during, uh, Michael Harrison's tenure and it won't be corrected during, during, uh, Richard Worley's, uh, uh, tenure. I, I, again, I, I ask you and beg you, uh, listen to the citizens of this city, those who know the history of the Northeast District. I'm asking you, please do not confirm this man. Find somebody better. There are better officers. He's not even a resident of Baltimore City. He violated the policy when he was, uh, uh, being trained for this position. He violated the policy based on the residency rules that he was supposed to be a, a citizen of Baltimore City. He's, and he's, I'm not sure if he's made that, uh, uh, move yet to, uh, uh, complete the task of being, uh, a resident of the city and, and, uh, complying with the residency rules. But again, what does it say to other officers that have lived in this city, that have paid their dues in this city, that are residents of this city? What does that say to these citizens, to these, uh, officers that protect and serve every day? What does it say to them? That, that the rules can just be, uh, thrown out? That, that, uh, special favoritism and, and, and special selections can be made? It, it makes no sense what's going on in reference to this confirmation is concerned. Throw this confirmation out, send it back to the mayor, and let's get somebody in this office that will do a better job than, than, than the history that's been shown by this officer.
Bill, Bill Bleich.
Clock hasn't started yet, has it?
I don't know if you noticed, I haven't been timing anybody. I've let everybody say what they need to say.
Good evening. My name is Bill Bleich. I am strongly opposed to confirmation of Richard Worley. Worley was commander of the Northeast District in 2013 when officers from that district took the life of unarmed Tyrone West. I taught three of Tyrone's cousins. They're a wonderful family and I firmly believe, apparently unlike Worley, that the officers who wrongly and violently took Tyrone's life should be vigorously prosecuted. In 2014, with Worley still in command at Northeast, the independent review panel looked at Tyrone West's death. One of the panel members was Amy Dillard, a law professor. Looking back on that experience, Ms. Dillard has written, quote, "It was a useless exercise that, to me, merely gave cover to the department and the state's attorney at the time for their decision to forego prosecution of the officers who killed West." And she concluded her son commentary saying, quote, "Eight years later, I am stepping outside of my role as reviewer and recommending public prosecution for West's death." To now put Worley permanently in charge, someone who incredibly did not take a public stand against the racist and murderous brutality perpetrated by officers under his watch would be to create a highly dangerous situation for residents of Baltimore City. At the recent town halls, Worley argued that he couldn't be expected to know about abusive actions perpetrated by officers under his command because being in charge of about 140 officers made it impracticable to know what they all were doing. However, as a teacher, I was responsible each year for an even larger number of people, about 150 students. It was incumbent upon me to know who was having suicidal thoughts, who needed extra one-on-one academic coaching, who was being bullied, who was bullying someone else, and who needed individual encouragement, and so on. I do not accept Worley's argument that he has no culpability for a murder under his watch, or that he had no role to play afterward in the important quest for accountability. I strongly encourage you to take a firm stand, oppose the confirmation of Richard Worley as police commissioner. Let's be clear, anyone who votes for confirmation, in essence, is helping to enable systemic racism and deadly police brutality.
Next up, Mike Hilliard.
My name is Mike Hilliard. I'm a retired major from the Baltimore Police Department and I had the privilege of serving 17 years as a community services director for the Harbell Community Organization. During that period of time, Rich Worley was the major in the Northeast District. And his community services sergeant was Chris Sirakis. I'd known Chris since I was a lieutenant in the Baltimore Police Department and we were candid with each other. And I was standing next to Chris in a meeting and I looked at him and I asked what he thought of then-Major Worley. And he said, "He reminds me of Bert Shirey." Now, some of you probably don't know who Bert Shirey was, but if you had asked former Mayor Young, Councilwoman Clark, or Councilman Stokes, they would tell you that Bert Shirey was a legendary police commander in Baltimore who, like Major Worley, came up through the ranks and served as both deputy commissioner and acting police commissioner. In fact, when he retired, he was, uh, he was handling both the deputy operations and deputy administrative positions. Chris went on to tell me that one day he was moping around the district and Bert Shirey walked up to him and asked him what his issue was. And Chris shared with him that his wife was in labor and he was unable to get off because he didn't have any leave. And Bert Shirey looked at Chris and said, "Go be with your wife." Chris then looked at me and said, "I would go through a wall, for a brick wall, for Bert Shirey." And he paused and said, "I feel the same way about Rich Worley." You spent a lot of money sending me to leadership classes when I was a major in the police department, and there's one thing that I learned from it. You manage your financial and physical resources and you lead, motivate, and inspire people. If you want a person who will manage the department's physical resources and lead, motivate, and inspire both his police officers and the citizens of Baltimore, I would urge you to confirm Rich Worley as police commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Cindy Camp.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cindy Camp. I'm with Moms Demand, Moms Demand Action Volunteers for Baltimore City, and I'm thankful for this opportunity to be here. One of the most important things for us as an organization is community policing and constitutional policing. And we ask that you allow us as an organization to come in and have that connectivity piece. So I'm here asking, on behalf of my organization, that you allow myself, our volunteers, and other community partners assist because we realize, once we have community policing in a healthy way, that it will bring the cohesiveness that we need to our community. In the overflow room, I would be amiss not to mention the other women that's over there who've lost their loved ones from census gun violence. So as a community, we ask that you allow us to come in and help heal our city. So my ask, and it's gonna be brief and short, that you allow us to come in and assist and that your strategy and your priority will be community policing and constitutional policing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, S., I believe it says Harp, Harper? S. Harper.
Good evening, everybody. So I've, uh, attended every single hearing regarding the potential confirmation of Richard Worley. And at those hearings, I shared my personal experience, um, that when I was 14 years old, I was sexually harassed by a group of BCPD outside, uh, the aquarium. And they only stopped when I pulled out my phone to record them. Uh, I had a life-altering spine injury at a peaceful protest outside City Hall here in 2019. And I also shared that while working in Baltimore City schools, many elementary school children have shared with me that they have so much trauma with police that it was impairing their ability to be able to focus in school. So at these hearings, I asked Mr. Worley a series of questions. I asked him if he had ever witnessed police brutality in his entire career, and he said no. When Ms. Jones asked him what his emotional response was at the scene of her brother's murder, Mr. Worley waxed poetic about how awful and sad it was. So he made both of those statements at the same time. And, uh, I asked... And I asked Mr. Warley what he did as a leader, as a major, overseeing the Gun Trace Task Force members during the height of their well-documented reign of terror. And he said that he had no power to do anything about that, and it all involved internal affairs, and that nobody committed any crimes in front of him because, he said, he's a good cop. So I followed up with the staff member I was directed to to ask a procedural question about whether it's true that, as the major, he could have done nothing proactive when he caught wind of the whirlwind of misconduct and murder happening under his leadership. So I've yet to hear back procedurally whether there is anything else he could have done. And I have a hard time believing, and a lot of other citizens I've talked to have a hard time believing, there is nothing proactive a police major can do when they're at the scene of a murder of an unarmed man, and it looks like what they're hearing doesn't add up when it looks like witness testimonies are being disregarded. A lot of us have a hard time believing that there is nothing that a major can do when he's seeing these Gun Trace Task Force lawsuits play out and taxpayer money continue to be paid to these victims of these atrocious crimes. So I'd like to ask the council and other high-ups in the Police Department what it is procedurally possible for a cop in that position to do proactively as a major. And I'd also like to ask the council and higher-ups in the Police Department why a man who had domestic violence charges and a restraining order filed against him the same year that he became a cop was allowed to become a cop in the first place, and why this has never been addressed? If you'd like to speak for yourself about the nature of the domestic violence charges and the restraining order filed against you the same year you begun?
Ma'am, you got to address the council. That's the policy for these hearings. So thank you for your testimony. The next up is Gretchen Tome.
Where do I follow up to get answers to these questions? Like, what a proactive major would have done or could have done in his position? And who made the determination that somebody with a month's-old restraining order and domestic violence charge can be a Baltimore City police officer?
Ma'am, if you have questions about policies and others, I would suggest that you attend the monthly commanders' meetings that occur in all the districts. And that's the forum for that. But for here, you're testifying before the council for the council to make a determination. So thank you for your testimony.
Was the council aware about the domestic violence charges and the restraining order?
Next up is Gretchen Tome. Ma'am, please be respectful of the next person who's turned to testify.
Oh, I have all the respect in the world for Gretchen.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you need any more time?
Ma'am, if you can testify before the council.
Yes, good evening. My name is Gretchen Tome. I'm a Baltimore resident. I live in the Northeast District in Bella Edison. I've lived there since 2012. Warley said here tonight that community engagement is his first priority. From the start, this process has not been transparent and has not given the community a choice in who is chosen to lead our Police Department. We have had to fight to get minimal community involvement. This hearing was originally scheduled for August, before those community town halls were even finished. Yesterday, the Board of Estimates was set to approve Warley's salary along with a guaranteed year of pay whether or not he is confirmed here tonight. That is not a good start for someone who claims to prioritize building trust and community engagement. At the recent town halls, Warley stated that one bad officer is too many. However, he has been in leadership roles in the department for over 10 years, beginning his career during zero-tolerance policing, rising to leadership during the corruption and violence of the Gun Trace Task Force, and serving in charge of the Northeast District. As many of you have mentioned tonight, when things including Tyrone West was killed, Abdul Salam was beaten, Officers Chapman and Ruiz, among others, racked up citizen complaints for abuse and brutality. Ruiz has even since been promoted to sergeant. Warley has offered no evidence of any actions he personally took as a whistleblower or a leader to speak out against violence and corruption and to stand up for and protect the citizens of our city. This leads me to believe he was either ignorant of what was happening, condoned and allowed it, or was an ineffective leader whose officers felt they did not need to listen to him. None of these scenarios, and nothing I have heard tonight, leads me to believe that Warley should be in charge of the entire department. I ask you to oppose his nomination of commissioner tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Chantel, I believe it says Green. Chantel?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chantel Green. I own more than just Friends Adult Medical Day Center, as well as Nurses Are Us. I'm an advocate for the elderly community, so I'm here to speak for my elderly population. We need a change in Baltimore City. I service 1,000 elderly clients in the Baltimore City community, so that's why I'm here tonight, because they asked me to be here. I'm not going to oppose a nomination, but I think we need to get to know who we are voting in. My elderly people have never heard of the person that's being voted in. Most of them have been city officials. Because of HIPAA, I can't say who. But we don't know enough to move forward with this vote. We need to know. We need change. The elderly people who we forget about, they are afraid. They are afraid. So we really need to consider the elderly population when we are making this vote and make sure that they are going to be helped when you vote the person in that you are going to vote. And make sure that he understands that the elderly population are really afraid, and he needs to get in the community and talk to them. That's the only way a change is going to be made. So that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next up, Ted Sutton.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Ted Sutton. I'm the founder of Men Against Murder and also the People Can Change Youth Movement. And just to share, my grandfather was one of the deacons of defense that fought against the Klan in Louisiana. My father organized for Dr. King at Southern and Grambling University. And my mother worked for Mega Everts the same summer he was assassinated. And she also became a principal here, and my father a pastor here. And I was their middle child that hooked up with one of the rougher groups, the same people they wrote the series The Wire behind. A lot of people knew my godfather, little Melvin Williams. I only say that to say is because I ended up actually asking for God to give me a second chance in the Mitchell Courthouse Building 10 minutes before I was to get sentenced to 15 years for something I didn't do when I was known as Crazy Ted. And I ended up changing my entire life. So I dedicate my life to trying to go after the youth that some people have given up on. And I only say that to say that when you look at me and you see I'm Dr. Ted Sutton, was known as Crazy Ted, my whole thing is that it's not how you start, it's how you finish. And so I'm never going to give up on Baltimore. And I think that as far as I'm concerned and things, we need a police department that is not just fighting crime, but they're fighting for the community and with the community. And I say that because when they had the Freddie Gray uprising, Hogan said he wanted to meet with some gang leaders. Ray Lewis said he was going to, you know, come also. They didn't show up when I had brought some of the actual gang leaders during that time because it was a letter that was put out that was a lie, saying that they were coming together to try to hurt police officers, and that was not true. And I talked with them, and they said, "No, we're being set up. We would never type a letter and mail it to the Police Department to say we were going to commit a crime." I only say that is because an officer actually did show up, and he did talk with them. That was actually Melvin Russell. And he did talk with them, you know, during that time. But I only say, you know, this with the situation. To be a person that has dedicated my life and I'm fighting against what's going on out here, it's almost offensive to just say who is going to be. And then we only had one option because I'm not anti-police. I'm anti-wrong. And that's what the whole situation is. So I think that we really should have more time to be able to have some input, and not just one option. Because I didn't have no problem, you know, against him. Now, I did have a problem with the Gun Trace Task Force that was under him, but I didn't have a problem with him. So when I'm saying that, I think that we need to really take some time. And if he is the one that is the best candidate for the job, then let that be done. But until then, let the people have the opportunity to have some other options before we just say that this is being forced on us without any type of voice from the community. Because it seems like it's like a doctor that's prescribing medicine for a patient that they haven't spoken to. My name is Dr. Ted Sutton, and I support that message.
Thank you, Dr. Sutton. Next up, Yolanda Pully. Yolanda Pully? As she comes down, we will call her up. Next up, Seen Hare. Sean Hare. Okay, next up, Casey Weiner. Okay, Mark Washington.
Thank you, council members. I'm going to keep this brief. Less than one month into his new position as acting commissioner of the BPD, Baltimore City was faced with the most horrific mass shooting in its history. 30 people were shot, two fatally. Two families ripped apart by the brazen acts of those with no regard for human life. The pain that those families must endure, unimaginable. Those sworn to protect and serve failed to deliver on the most basic aspects of their job, to protect and to serve. The indifference displayed, the lack of awareness, and the ability to assess a growing threat speaks volumes about a department rudderless and set adrift. I watched, as we all did, as deflection, finger pointing, and the pleas of ignorance were to be heard from every agency deciding to prevent such an atrocity from occurring. I watched closely, as I wanted to hear directly from the acting commissioner of the BPD, the one-time commander of the Northeast District, a former teammate who played softball with community residents as a member of the Northeast Crime Stoppers softball team, a man who helped take back the 1,600 block of Chilton Street from nefarious drug dealers and complicit landlords who were sheltering them, a straight talker who refused to accept that he and his officers were powerless to make a difference in our community. While it is unrealistic to expect the complete transformation of the department in less than 30 days, I observed, and I waited, eager to hear from Richard Warley, hoping to discern whether he had evolved into just another bureaucrat on the rise or if remnants of the same straight talker who had tirelessly pursued positive change remained. Would he, as he had done during his tenure as major, bear the weight of responsibility, accept accountability, and reveal the unvarnished truth? There is no measure of peace or closure to be brought to the families that lost loved ones as a result of the failure of a system built on indifference. But I was encouraged to hear the former commander of the Northeast District and acting commissioner of the BPD stand up and tell the truth about his officers, his agencies, and their mistakes. I was grateful to hear the unvarnished truth. Richard Warley is by no means a perfect man, but he is exactly what the BPD and the citizens of Baltimore need at this time in its next commissioner. I urge the city council to approve his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to the few names we said before. Yolanda Pully? Nope. Sean Hare?
Hello, this is Gooden. Thanks. Good evening. I appreciate the time to speak. My name is Sean Hare. I'm a graduate student at Johns Hopkins University. I'm not going to go on a tangent with this story. I think everyone in the room knows that I'm going to mention the fact that the city is responsible for the fact that my university is now making a private police force. They've been doing this for years. They have been employing different tactics to destroy student opposition and hide the story about that. And the sort of central theme of that whole story is that the, I mean, it began in 2018 when that was just announced in an email to me. And the president of the university hit the fact that they were pushing a bill through in the Maryland General Assembly that would legalize that. And while it was happening, the neighborhood associations surrounding it, one by one, would vote against that. And they were then cut out of the picture, respectively, each time that they did so. And what's happening in this room right now just feels like a repeat of that, where people in the room are expressing, you know, the fact that they're concerned about this, and they're just going to get cut out of the picture. And it's not even that the city is not listening to everyone. It just seems like, you know, one step behind that where they're just not even presenting the information. I was in that other room. You know, I didn't even know I was supposed to be here. The TV was kind of really bad audio. Someone mentioned a previous testimony how they were, they didn't even know until a few days ago that this was happening. They're different, you know. Anyone else that could be being made commissioner, and this is the person we're talking about today that is. One thing I'm upset about is that is when Richard Warley mentioned the community policing approach and the shortage of 500 officers and his commitment to, you know, getting rid of the bad officers. I'm not really sure how those two stories fit together. That just seems like a contradiction. I don't understand how you're supposed to be concerned about getting rid of the bad officers if it's a shortage. That just means you're going to be hiring bad officers. That just seems very obvious to me. It just seems like there are a bunch of very, very easy contradictions to this whole story, on top of the fact that people are just, you know, they're just not only shutting out opposition, they're just refusing to tell the story to any of the opposition, which the opposition is just the people that live in the city. So, yeah. I don't know what I'm going to go tell back. Go, when I'm done with this, I have to go back to my university and then tell them what's going on. These are students that I work with. These are spaces that I'm in. I'm just going to say that, you know, I guess the city is not even on our side if this whole story is unfolding a second time here. Thank you.
Next up, Casey Weiner.
Good evening to everyone gathered here today and to all members of the city council. My name is Casey Weiner, and I live in the Middle East neighborhood. I consistently witness my fellow citizens in active mental health crises near my residence. As per Article 6 of the consent decree, the BPD must, quote, "commit to respond to people with behavioral health disabilities or in crisis," unquote. I have zero faith in Commissioner Warley's ability to guarantee a proper response or to ensure the respect of the human rights of my neighbors in crisis, especially given the police brutality incidents under his watch. Yeah, love to. I have zero faith in Commissioner Warley's ability to guarantee a proper response or to ensure the respect of the human rights of my neighbors in crisis, especially given the police brutality incidents under his watch. I've also witnessed a summer of shootings, greeted with either lax response times I've also witnessed a summer of shootings, greeted with either lax response times or no response from the police during Worley's temporary tenure, highlighting the hesitancy of my neighbors to call the only option we have, 911. Yet I've also consistently seen police slowly patrolling my neighborhood in times of calm, serving only to cultivate an atmosphere of intimidation and fear. The last thing we need is more cops walking in person or serving to intimidate my neighborhood. Worley and the Baltimore police do not value the lives of my neighbors, but instead prioritize their potential addition to the United States' carceral slavery and profit system. I have no confidence in the commissioner prioritizing or caring about my neighborhood or other neglected neighborhoods like mine.
Mike Check.
Next up. I think it says Claudia Gilmar, Gilmar. Sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members. I'm here today as a longtime employee of the Johns Hopkins University. I'm on the faculty side. I'm not in my work clothes. I, but it's as Hopkins insider that I'm talking to you today to address the very specific angle of the private police that my employer is at this moment trying to create. The draft policies have come out today. From that perspective, I have nothing personal against Richard Worley. I'm listening like everybody else and making my own opinion, but I have no insight in his heart and have no reason to question the testimonies of previous witnesses. What I question is the process around the police recently in Baltimore City. Our mayor was probably elected with votes of people who believed him when he said he was against the private police at Hopkins, but he has changed his mind. And this is why I do not trust his nomination. I wish I could ask Mr. Worley if, what he, what will happen to the BPD. Hopkins is, has limited to 5% the number of officers they can take from the BPD. But the cozy, the cozy relationship between the first employer, Hopkins, and the city and the BPD is very concerning. We, the faculty at Hopkins, at least in my school, on, at Homewood, the School of Arts and Sciences, are an overwhelming majority of opponents to the police. Yes, we've been ignored all the time. We've been misrepresented by the leadership and we are still fighting against the creation, documenting how it's happening. And as, you know, most of my colleagues are researchers, we have good reasons to mistrust, distrust the way Hopkins is implementing this private police. And as actually Mary Pat Clark herself told us, what Hopkins has decided will happen. You are our last line. And I do not understand how the mayor not only has changed his mind, but has completely minimized underestimated your power as the council. And I believe he's actually disseminating false information when he says that there was nothing that could be done to stop the signature of the MOU, the memorandum of understanding that happened in December. You have so much more power than you think. And we're, have now another chance to ask you to use your power and, I'm sorry to say that to you, but to send back to the mayor this nomination, as everybody else who opposed the nomination has said today, it needs to be done properly. My last word will be that I didn't feel I would be the right person to bring up the issue, but to have a white police officer at the head of the Baltimore Police Department is a step back in a history we don't want to revisit. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes all the public testimony of everybody who signed in. We will now go back to committee questions. First up, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Interim Commissioner Worley, when we talk about supervision and misconduct of investigations and discipline, can you explain to me step by step how you would implement that in the department?
Say, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. So when we talk about supervision and misconduct and investigations and discipline within the, within the department, can you walk me through how you're going to do that in the department?
Yeah, I mean, it's done the same way we've been doing it for the last few years since we started the reform process. If a complaint is handled from within, say, for example, if a sergeant does something and sees a violation, the sergeant enters it in blue team, it goes to Internal Affairs. Internal Affairs decides if they're going to handle the investigation or if it's a minor offense that can be done through, through the district, discipline of the district commander. If it's a pretty serious offense, then it would be elevated to different, eight, different parts of Internal Affairs, like ethics or something like that. If it's involving, involving a use of force, there are one, two, and three levels. Police-involved shootings are investigated by a special investigative response team that's part of Public Integrity Bureau. It's completely separate. Their investigations are overseen. They're part of the consent decree. We also have the Accountability Bureau that starts to look at smaller offenses and they actually give out the penalties for the smaller offenses based on what the offense is. And those are citizens. Plus, we have citizens that sit on our trial boards and have the same power as our officers do when it comes to officers who take trial boards for their, for their incidents that they're accused of.
If a complaint was made against an officer with regard to promotion, how is that evaluated within the process of the promotion?
You mean in regard, against an officer? But basically, we have a policy in place so that it's done equally. What happens is, and we just did, we just, they just met because I'm no longer part of that committee. It's a committee, it's a diverse committee of all of our upper command. They meet when we get ready to do promotions, which we're getting ready to do, two sergeants and three lieutenants. They look at the record of the individual. They look at their work history. They've come out at a certain point on the list that's done through Human Resources of the city. And then we look at their, their record. And then we get recommendations for or against from the district commander. And those are all weighted. And we pay a special attention to any violations within the last five years that can cause the individual to not get promoted and to be skipped. And then we can move on to other promotions. What, what's happened in the past is, the rule that we had in the past was, it was called a rule of five. So if you skipped five individuals, you could not, no longer skip anyone. In order, like, say, for example, we've decided there's five people who did not deserve to get promoted. According to the contract, we have to promote sergeants and lieutenants within 45 days of an opening. So if we have five people that are already skipped, we can't skip anyone else. So we have to pick someone off of that list, either the next person or one of those five. Most recently, we changed that to give us a bigger pool because our hands were tied a few times with that. That has changed now. We look at 25% of the list, which will stop us from having to take somebody that we really don't want to, but we have to because of our commitments to the contract.
Thank you. Next up, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to the issue of auto thefts, interim Commissioner Worley, I assume the deployment of club devices has been productive in reducing the number of those and is saving the city some money?
Not, not as much as we wanted it to because we're still getting them stolen, they're still getting attempts and stolen autos at a higher rate than we want. I was pleasantly surprised, the Northern District was up for ComStat today, and their stolen autos were actually down in the 28-day period compared to the last 28-day period. So they've actually made some progress. And we asked the major what she was doing, and she said she had flooded the community with newsletters and flyers and with trying to give out the clubs, that they ran out of their clubs, but just continually putting it out there to make sure that you lock your vehicle, you don't leave any valuables in the vehicle. You put a club on the vehicles, because that's really the only deterrent, because it's so quick to get into a car and try to steal it. If the club's not there, they may still try it. And like I said, 67% of them are still not Hyundai's and Kia's. There's still other vehicles that are being stolen. Honda Accord is, is one that's normally at the top of the list. So what we have to do is just make sure, and one of the things that we continue to battle with are individuals pulling up in front of a store, leaving their car running, going inside the house, or going inside the business, somebody jumps in the car and takes off. We're getting ready to come into a season where people are going to warm their cars up in their driveways. And then soon as someone jumps in the car and takes off, it's a stolen auto. So we're trying to put all that information out there to stop the, stop the, the constant flow of stolen autos, but it's still a problem. Our vehicle stops, we want to increase the vehicle stops because there's a lot of, there's a lot of stolen autos still riding around in the city. We have license plate readers strategically deployed. We got stationary license plate readers. The Baltimore Crime and Information Centers that we have in the districts have license plate readers that can call out stolen autos. The problem is, as soon as we get behind one and they take off, we have, we can't pursue. And they know that. So even when we get a chance to get behind them, if they don't pull over, we're really not going to chase the vehicle.
Where I'm getting at with this, the Kia's and the Hyundai's in the certain time range of production are susceptible to theft, whether they're locked or not, unless they have a club, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So have we made a request of the administration for additional funding to get more clubs to distribute?
I don't know if we've made that request yet, but we will.
All right, thank you.
Can I just, can I just add to that? We actually have been meeting with them and the Law Department to talk about what is the best path forward, given the, the current litigation. We have to be very careful about what we ask from the, from the, from the dealership. But there, there are--
Chief Worsberger--
Yes, sir.
Because maybe I didn't ask the question correctly, so I apologize. Have, has the police department asked the mayor's administration for additional resources to procure more clubs?
We have not made that particular ask because we are in, we are in conversation about how the best way to proceed is. We are reviewing with the Law Department whether or not we can make the ask to the dealer, to the manufacturer first so that we can save taxpayer dollars. If we are not able to do that, then perhaps we will go down that other route. But we are trying to, to figure out a viable solution that is both cost-effective but effective, sir.
Yep.
So, please, I was coming to you next. Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. So I want to, I want to actually take us back to some of the initial work that we've done around, when we started to see this uptick in Hyundai and Kia thefts. So we worked very closely, myself in particular, worked with BPD to reach out to the manufacturers of those vehicles as they were supplying club devices to other jurisdictions around us. We were, we were able to get, I believe, 3,000 of those devices. In addition, what we've also been doing is working with partners at the state because we are seeing that this is not just something that's happening here in the city of Baltimore, obviously is happening across the country. The state is very much interested in this and we've had conversations with the state around partnership. The third thing that we've been actively doing around the Hyundai and Kia theft in particular, as you noted, there are vehicles that cross a particular span of time that are more susceptible to theft, but there is a system upgrade that the manufacturers have developed and they are trying to get that upgrade out to owners of those vehicles. And so we've been working with BPD to ensure that we are communicating out to the public that they can actually get this upgrade to their security system, which will help prevent some of these thefts. So it's a multi-pronged strategy that we've been deploying to get these thefts under control.
Thank you. That's--
Thank you.
It's like a recall, right? So I guess, and I'm going to close out, chairman's looking at me. These devices are $25 apiece online. And while I appreciate all the thought that the police department has put in and the actions that the mayor's administration have taken, can we just find a way to purchase more of these and start getting them distributed to the cars that are at risk?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. And, and if you could provide an update to the committee on that by the end of next week, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, ma'am.
Will do.
Thank you. Just for the record, my preference is that you just catch the people who are committing these carjackings and stealing these cars to begin with so that we don't have to further burden the residents of Baltimore to take their cars into dealerships or to go out there and get a club for it. Next up, Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the question I had for this round, interim Commissioner Worley, you talked about the culture of the department. And in our, in our hearing on the Brooklyn Day shooting and in the after-action report, it notes a term that has really stuck with me, officer indifference. And I think, for me, it really stuck out because I think that that's been the, a term that a lot of my constituents haven't used but have verbalized in other ways when they're, when they're concerned about inaction from the department and, and officers and there's sort of being a culture of that. Can you speak to what your plans are to remediate that, to, to restore a sense of urgency in the constitutional policing work that we're all wanting to see happen here? So that the, the confidence can be restored to our, our constituents of that if something occurs, that, that officer is going to respond and be effective in their work?
The first thing we did is we have something that not a lot of police departments have, which, and she's sitting here with us today as an equity officer. We had her look with everyone else and with the consent, with the Compliance Bureau to see what happened in Brooklyn. And it resonated to me when we had the first hearing, when Council President Mosby asked about the difference. Was there a difference? And I, I wanted to look at that, would there have been a difference response from somewhere else? So I wanted to make sure that we didn't have inequities like that. And why didn't the officers do what they were supposed to do that night? And that, that's what we ended up coming up with. But the first thing that we had to do is face the fact that we identified that we did have officer indifference that night. We could have stopped that all during the day. There was plenty of chances for us to stop it. We had the resources to stop it. We could have moved the resources there. So we now have those officers identified. We didn't take action. There will be discipline done. That, that'll go through the Public Integrity Bureau. But we want, we constantly look at everything that we do through the lens of the equity officer. And I'll, I'll let her speak if she'd like, but that's how we make sure that things are done equitably throughout the city. We changed, the redistricting actually helped with that a little bit because at one point, Brooklyn had one post car and it accounted for 17% and almost 20% of the calls for the west, for the Southern District. That now is covered by three post cars because of the amount of calls and the amount of violence that's in that area. So instead of one officer working that area, there's three officers. So that helped equal out the balance of workload per officer and per district. And we continually look at every single policy. She sit, Director Blythor sits in ComStat and monitors what, everything that we talk about to ensure equitable process. And that's what we're going to continue to do to make sure that we are serving the city equally throughout the city and every neighborhood.
And, and I guess, just to quickly elaborate, I wasn't really trying to frame the question in the context exclusively of what happened in Brooklyn. I'm, I'm saying that within the, there's a feeling among my constituents that within the department across the city, that there's a lack of urgency when it comes to responding to incidents. And I'll, and I'll just give an example. I had an officer tell me off the record that some of their colleagues will hear a shooting occur and wait until the call comes in before responding. the call comes in before responding, which seems logical to some, but to the expectation that the constituents have is that if you hear or are around the corner from an incident occurring, you should just respond because in that time period that you're waiting for someone to call 911, assuming they even heard it, that individual may be long gone and we talk about the clearance rate all the time. And so that individual came to me concerned that their colleagues were not working with a sense of urgency and this is far, but far before the, the Brooklyn incident.
Well, that one is the first up. The behavior of the officer who don't respond is unacceptable. Also, the behavior of the officer who didn't say anything is just as much unacceptable. That's what ethical policing is about. That's why we do Epic. If he knows that he's off, these officers are not responding to shootings when they come out, he's just as culpable as they are if he allows it to continue to happen. And it's his job to turn it over to his sergeant or Internal Affairs so those officers can be disciplined and get rid of them if we have to. There's no reason for anyone to not respond to a shooting or any call for service regardless of what the call for service is. We may not get there in time, but the whole process of, of us policing ourselves within the street, that's what ethical policing is courageous is about. Report to officer that's not doing the behavior that you're supposed to do, to be, or doing their duty. Do you really want to rely on that officer to be your backup if he's not responding to a shooting of somebody else? So the officer who told you that should be telling Internal Affairs about it and we have a, a policy that will protect the officers, we use it all the time. And then if somebody tries to retaliate against him for reporting another officer, there's a policy against retaliation. So we've got as many of the bases covered as we, we have, but if the officer continues to sit back and allow his, his sector officers to do that, he's just as bad as the one who's not responding, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Same sort of line of questioning, although I have another question after this, so I'm not sure what, how many rounds we're doing. Indifferent wasn't the word I would have used in the situation and like my colleague, we have gotten reports of officers saying, you know, I didn't come in, you know, right away because this wasn't worth our time. Or we had some, I have to send you this video where somebody was driving down 33rd Street, turned into a median and then went the opposite way of traffic with an officer right there and the officer didn't do anything. And so I get that there's a morale issue. However, it's just unacceptable that officers are not taking this role very seriously or just feeling like they're going to get through the eight hours and go. And that's not everybody. You, we had officers the other night when there was a flood on 35th and Hillen and they did a phenomenal job working with the residents who had lost their cars and trying to get everything together. So I'm not talking about everybody. However, what we saw in Brooklyn and what we, these other examples are egregious. And so I think we're going to need more assistance in understanding how we're going to get to the bottom of this, whether it's through, you know, more emphasis on Epic, whether it's through making sure that the public knows how to report officers, whether it's making an example of the officers that did, that did not and failed to keep our community safe in Brooklyn. I don't know, but I'm hoping that you can answer a little bit clearer about what exactly we cannot have officers that are indifferent, period.
I would, I would actually disagree with it being a morale issue. I think it's an integrity issue. Morale doesn't have anything to do with it, it's either you're good or you're bad. If you don't do your job, that's integrity. You get sworn to take an oath, you get paid for eight and a half hours a day to go out there and do a job. If you don't want to do it, find another profession. I'll, I'll go 500 more officers down rather than have 500 cops like that. So it's not, it's not a morale, morale, we can't use morale. Sometimes I think our officers use morale as an excuse, just like we used the consent decree as an excuse when it first started, but just do your job is all we ask you to do. You take an oath, you get paid a decent salary to go out and do your job. And if you have video of an officer not responding, send it to us because that's an easy one to figure out because all we got to do is get the car number and we know who was driving it that day at what time. And the citizens that have complaints, they can call, they can call 911 or they can call Internal Affairs directly and not even deal with 911. It's called Internal Affairs and it's, it's manned by Public Integrity Bureau. They take the complaint and you don't even have to deal with the district personnel or a 911 operator.
I would just encourage that we get more graphics and social media and stuff on that and use us as a partner to get the word out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I have another question, but I'll-
Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Acting Commissioner. So I'm going to go back to, similar to the line of questioning. We have PIB. The question is more so the current structure of it. What things would you change about the current structure and why? Because if we're talking about integrity, we're talking about holding officers accountable. As someone who's been in the department for several years, you should understand the culture and how do we get around the culture of people who may turn a blind eye to something that is wrong?
I think we've already started that. One of the things that we started is the trial board. We have citizens on trial boards, so no longer are officers and supervisors only judged by the officers and supervisors in the department. There's citizens who sit on the trial board and make judgment on the activity that the officer did and they get an equal vote with the officers and the supervisors that are on there. Also, the ACC, the Accountability Bureau, we have those who, they're basically a group that looks at our lower level offenses and they recommend the penalties for it. So we're involving people outside of the Police Department, plus we keep the Public Integrity Bureau completely isolated from the rest of the officers for the most part. And one of the things that we just recently started is to have more supervisors as investigators. Instead of officers or detectives doing investigations, we have, we had 10 openings in the Public Integrity Bureau. We're going to fill those 10 openings with sergeants so that the supervisors can actually do investigations. They're going to oversee some detectives, but they're going to be doing the investigations themselves because a lot of, several agencies throughout the country use sergeants as Internal Affairs investigators because they've already had three to five years' experience at least and they've already ascended to a supervisory position. So they can oversee officers and oversee better investigations a little better than detectives are. Oh yeah, and we'd also have, we're hiring civilian, civilian investigators. I don't know, go ahead. How many do we have?
So so far we've hired two. We have another one started on Monday. Our allotment is for 10. So far they've worked out wonderful. They've come in, learned the process, been trained and so they're going to be a, a part of the Bureau for the foreseeable future.
And that's a process of getting the community involved in the Internal Affairs part of the, of the process.
Thank you. Councilwoman Porter.
If I could permit with a follow-up?
Go ahead.
So I, and I hear you, but I, I hear you, but I know other departments allow officers to report anonymously to PIB. Is that something that we're willing to allow to happen?
They can.
And continue to allow to happen and put out there? Because what the public doesn't understand, and I know this as a process, that you're communicating that someone files a complaint but not given the opportunity to file it anonymously too because you can't destroy culture if people don't feel safe as well, right, within that culture?
No, I agree. They, they can, they can, anybody can report it anonymously. It goes to Internal Affairs and it gets investigated just as if, just as if it, as if somebody, there was a complaint behind it.
So we have an online portal. If you go to the BPD website, it says File, Report Misconduct. It's an online portal, no names needed. If you don't want to file a name, you don't need to. Obviously it's easier for us if we can follow back with you and ask questions, but you're not required to. It comes directly to us, it doesn't pass to anybody else, it goes directly to Public Integrity and it's open within 24 hours.
Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Interim Commissioner Worley, in several hearings related to the microzone approach, I've expressed my displeasure and ineffectiveness of the microzone approach. Can you speak to how you would deploy resources throughout the city, given that we have significant resource challenges, staffing challenges? Can you talk to me about how you're going to, how you're going to execute that?
Yes, I'm actually revamping the microzone strategy. I've been working with the Data Driven Strategies Division to look, to see how, what we're going to do is create bigger zones, but a lot less zones so that we can spend a lot more time in the zones and have more than one officer responsible for it. So we're looking at something like a, we've been debating with the, not really debating, discussing with the executive team, do we want to have one for every sector or do we want to have multiple ones in sectors? So, because if we have too many, it's never going to work because we don't have enough time in the day to hit 80 or 90. So it's going to go down dramatically so that we can spend more time in the more violent areas. And then that, those are not the only zones we need to be spending time in. There's, officers have, have posts that they need to be out walking foot in the communities, in the business districts and, and doing business checks at nighttime when everything's closed up. So that's something I started looking at as soon, I was actually looking at it before Commissioner Harrison left. It was something I was looking at because we had had discussions about maybe changing it up because we've had it for a while and it was, it was producing some of the results that we wanted, but I think we can do better and we had those discussions before he left and I'm going to continue to do it and probably in the very near future, our strategy will change a little bit in the, as far as how many there are, but we just got to make sure we have the right data and we have the, because we, we've been in the department long enough, we know which areas need the microzones and they're just going to be a little bit bigger.
Thank you for that response. Can you speak to the nimbleness of how you're going to maneuver the microzones? One of the criticisms that I have of the microzone is that they are fixed for a specific amount of time within a specific geographic region. So for example, 1100, no, sorry, 1400 block of, of Austin Street is, is a microzone. Fourth, Fourth Street down in Brooklyn is a microzone. How are you going to be nimble with deployment? Because people walk, people move and so those microzones should invariably shift throughout the deployment.
They are, they are. We're actually going to review them every, a certain period of time and if we look, because what we want to do, redistricting kind of messed them up because we got, we have microzones now that cross districts, cross sectors, cross posts. So we had to do that anyway because of the, because of the redistricting, but we're constantly going to look at them, just like with the, with the redistricting. We're going to look at that after a certain amount of time and see, do we need to change things and change districts around a little bit? We're going to look at that over three to six months, but if we see, for example, we have a microzone in a sector and there's nothing going on in that sector, but we're getting hit somewhere else with a lot of violence, we can move that microzone. We have the ability to do it within ourselves, so we can, we can change it whenever we'd like and we constantly look at the, the crime and, and the enforcement as to see where we need to move resources. And even if it's not a microzone, lots of places we have to deploy to aren't microzones because there's a spike for whatever reason and we constantly have to deploy. So changing our locations and our enforcement and concentration is done almost daily with our resources.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm not a member of a committee, but can I make a committee request?
Sure.
Thank you. I'd like a written plan of how you're going to execute the microzones, the nimbleness of the microzones, how you're going to use CityWatch cameras, all the tools in your toolbox. If there can be some sort of plan and/or an additional briefing towards the Public Safety and Government Operations, I think that would be best. And so I'll leave it up to the chair to schedule that hearing, but I'm hoping that it can be within the next two months, so thank you.
Yeah, it'll, it'll come out within a lot, lot sooner than that.
Oh, perfect.
It'll be out a lot soon. I've, I've been working on it since I, even before the Commissioner left, I was working on it. Commissioner Harrison left, so it'll come out a lot sooner than that.
Yes, if we can get that briefing on the calendar, that'd be great. Next up, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With implementation of the consent decree underway and hopefully graduation or finality of that soon, what is the most significant, specific technology need that we have for implementation and what are your plans to address that interim commissioner?
Probably the, the most significant technology issue right now is aligning, getting alignment with the district so that we can prop, make sure, first make sure everything is in the right spot. That's number one. But what's affecting us now, we have the early intervention system that's, that's going to be coming online. That's one of the, the top things, but we're in the middle of case management. So case management was built by Axon for us. So we've been using Lotus Notes for 50 years or however long we've been using it and officers and detectives and supervisors have got used to some of the ways to check investigations. So we're constantly tweaking that and we're having Axon come in and build it and make changes as we need them. So that's the thing, that's a work in progress. We just recently switched where all investigations from this point forward are going to be put in case management. We're not going to use Lotus Notes. We still need it because of the cases that are already in there, but that's probably the biggest technology right now. We're, we're building, the mayor's giving us more LPR cars, we're getting more cameras, lots of things that we, that we've asked for, we're getting from, from the mayor's office. So I'd say the case manager is probably the biggest challenge right now.
And to the original question, the second part of that, what, what are your plans to expedite getting all that worked out?
We've already started that by having Axon speed up the process. They had given us a timeline that we told them was, was not acceptable. The mayor made a call and told them it wasn't acceptable, so they have changed and more in line with our timeline of getting it, getting it fixed.
And when's estimated completion on that?
Well, it's a, it's a work in pro, we're already using it, it's just a matter of tweaking what we want. Like there's some things that we used to be able to search for in Lotus Notes that we can't in Axon. So when we give them the fixes, it takes, I don't understand technology as well, that well, but it takes that, I guess, the programmers a little bit of time to fix it, but when they first gave us the estimate of when was unacceptable and they've since changed a great deal because we've pushed it and the mayor's pushed it that sooner than later.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Next question up. Councilman Burnett, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I did have a policy-related question. Sorry, I'm having issues getting into my laptop. So the purpose of the established police accountability boards, actually you've already talked, you've talked about this already, I don't want to get back into that. The, the use of facial recognition technology has been, been an issue that obviously you know I've raised a lot of concerns about, particularly the inability to effectively recognize black and brown people, women of color, people with physical disabilities. And it is a, a type of tech that is used not only by the Baltimore Police Department, but across the state of Maryland and across the country. Are you supportive of regulating the use of that software within the Baltimore Police Department?
Yes, I mean, you, we can, you can use it, but what happens, it is, it cannot be the primary reason for an arrest. It can contribute to probable cause, it can contribute to the case, but it's got, we had this discussion with, with the state's attorney, Mr. Bates, in our executive meeting. It's got to be way down low on the totem pole for evidence. There's got to be a lot more evidence and that's just one of the many things that is used to get an arrest warrant. It can't, it will never be the primary simply for the reasons that you, that you mentioned. Plus I got a class on it from Director De La Raca a couple of months ago because I had no idea. It's like, it, if you want her to explain it, she can explain it a lot better than I can, but for us, it's used as a tool, only as an investigative tool, but nowhere near the primary reason for getting any kind of warrant summons or probable cause.
Oh no, I understand how it's currently used. We've had a number of hearings and briefings on it. And obviously there's a, a bill that we'll be talking about in a few weeks. So it is encouraging to hear that you do support building a regulatory framework around the use to ensure that it's used ethically and there's accountability within the department. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next up, Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, I've asked this question a couple of times, so I'm hoping that as, since you've been in this job a little bit longer, that you may be able to provide for us either a path or some other strategies of how you're going to do this. We have illegal guns coming into the city every day. The officers are doing a great job taking the guns. Obviously, we've been discussing that. But it's like a hamster wheel. As you get them off, there's more on. Ultimately, that is the issue. So I'm curious to know a little bit more about your, what nee, what needs to happen because I think in our past conversations, I'll speak for myself, but I think the committee also has just not been satisfied with what is to happen. I understand that we need assistance from our federal and state partners. It is a regional issue. We need to dedicate more resources to it. I mean, this is the issue. So I'm curious to know if there, since you've been in charge for a little while, if there's even more to what you want to do to address that issue.
Yeah, I mean, you're right about the partner. We, we work hand-in-hand with ATF. They've got a portal where we can check on the guns. Obviously, none of the guns are coming here. There's legislation to try to regulate ghost guns. But we also have, we have three detectives that we have assigned to the U.S. Attorney's Office to help prosecute with handguns. And our officers, we've got, we've seized over 2,100 guns already this year, which is up 10%. Our gun arrests are down slightly, but we're constantly getting weapons. And the, the alarming thing is that we're getting weapons off of young people. Like on, for example, Monday, we had eight handgun violations, three of them were under the age of, of 16 that had the handguns. And they're getting the guns somehow. And then we've had a couple shootings with young people using, using weapons. So they're getting into the hands of wrongful owners, but we have to use our federal partners. We use the U.S. Attorney to prosecute these cases, cases. Mr. Bates, we work hand-in-hand with him to prosecute the gun cases. And we use, ATF is the best because they got unlimited resources. They have detectives that, we are in the middle of a couple of investigations to stop the flow of, I can't get into mu, too much, but we are in the middle of a couple investigations with them. And those have been pretty fruitful. We got, last Christmas, we got the individual with all the gun parts. We have tons of weapons in our, in our armory and, and the parts, plastic switches that make it automatic weapons because it's, it's becoming extremely, well, it's not because, it's extremely dangerous because you turn semi-automatic to an automatic and you've got 20 rounds going off in seconds. So those are some of the things that we just continue to try to push. The vehicle stops, a lot of guns are being transported through vehicles. But our officers constantly getting trained on how to stop and how to recognize people who are carrying guns. There are certain characteristics of an individual when they have a weapon that the officers are trained to look out for.
So the prosecuting part, the three detectives that are helping with the prosecutions, are the investigations of people who have handgun, who you've arrested for handgun violations? Or are they the ones going after the, the people dealing, bringing in the weapons?
No, those, those three are the ones that are investigating who we get with handguns. There are also task force officers assigned to ATF, FBI, Strike Force, all those other agencies, HIDA, all have task force officers from Baltimore City. There's about, I think we're, got about 25 detectives assigned to our federal task forces and about six or seven sergeants and two or three lieutenants that are all assigned to federal task forces to help with investigations. And those numbers are down significantly because of our staffing shortages. A couple of years ago, we probably had three times that many.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. And we, we still have one hearing after this hearing. We have the fire commission, fire chief's confirmation hearing as well. And so at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having the opportunity to work with interim Commissioner Worley very closely in multiple capacities over the last nine years, the level of accessibility and responsiveness that he has provided, not only to me, but members of the council, members of the community, members of the department, having attended three of the seven public town halls in person and, and watching interim Commissioner Worley over the, the past nine years. At this time, I'd like to move the nomination favorably.
Second. We'll do a roll call. First up is me, Chair Schleifer. I vote yes. Next up, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to explain my vote. So it's been great working with you, Commissioner, for your time in the southwest. I didn't know you were in northwest, northeast. It's just my, my hope that you do stick to the commitments that you have made today, particularly around, particularly around the, the culture issues and accountability issues within the department. I, you know, we've had a ton of hearings with you and I fully intend to use those hearings on the Public Safety Committee to continue to discuss these issues and monitor progress along the way. Because it is concerning for me and for a number of my colleagues and obviously folks in the community. But I'll be voting yes today in support of your nomination, but with, with the hopes that the, the changes that need to be made will be made under your leadership. Thank you.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Interim Commissioner Worley, I have very high hopes for you, but also very high expectations. This is a department that continues to be deeply in need of, of reform and becoming more efficient. I'm hopeful and confident that that will happen under your leadership. I vote yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Middleton is, has an excused absence. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to explain my vote. I obviously have had very frank conversations with you and other members and we need to continue to do that. Like my colleague said, you know, we're grateful that you spend so much time with us. I'll just speak for myself. I'm grateful that you spend so much time with us on public safety and that we expect the same moving forward. There's still a lot to do. And I'm grateful that you acknowledge that. You also took responsibility immediately and you continue to take responsibility when things are not working well and then, and you're going to get to the bottom of it, I hope. So I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to explain my vote. To put it quite frankly, this department has come a mighty long way. However, I still have concerns about the culture of it. The indifference still stands out to me and I'm going to be frank. I wait for what happens with the PA, with our police accountability board in terms of Brooklyn and see how it will impact the department. But I want to be clear, Commissioner. Persons who have white shirts should no longer be demoted to lieutenant again if they are in the instance. They should be fired because they have no union protections, right? And I'm going to hold you to that, right? Because I firmly believe that in terms of span of control for persons that are in leadership, if you start up and work your way down and you change the culture that way as well, I can say that because I've seen my commanders in the Western District change the culture of the Western, right? I see officers who are being proactive. I see people who are interested in the lives of the persons that they walk and serve daily. I see your involvement in that. However, I still have questions about where the, the direction this department is in terms of strategy, personnel management, costs. These are questions that we're going to have to answer together. We're going to have more discussions after this, but at this time, I'm going to vote yes. But I want to make sure that it is very clear that the accountability starts with you. And I'm being frank with the gun violence reduction. As we move forward throughout the entire city, I'm going to be lock and step with you because I've seen the differences made in West Baltimore. I want to see that for the rest of our city. I see the trajectory that we're going in fatal and non-fatal shootings. But there are issues about internalized racism in the department that we have to address. And I just want to leave it at this moment and say that if it's something that you cannot address, it's something that you should step down and fore. And you've been a straightforward person that if it's something that you can't do, you will say it. So I'm holding that accountability to you.
Councilman Conway.
I guess I have to explain my vote now since everyone has. Commissioner, my vote is yes.
I didn't explain my vote.
No. You should have explained your vote. My vote is yes. And I'll say primarily because of your straightforwardness and transparency, since you've taken on the role and probably taken on one of the biggest challenges that we've had in the last decade with the Brooklyn shooting. And looking at the morality of the department and the leadership that we need, you know, I think it's really, really, really important that folks who are coming up in the department can see someone in the department, lead the department. We have to get to a point where our department is self-sufficient, but also accountable. We still have problems to work through. We still have significant issues as evidenced by Brooklyn Day and the shooting then. So, you know, you and I talk a lot. That's why I didn't have too many questions today. My colleagues asked excellent questions for which we've already talked about ad nauseam probably. You know, I'm going to be very direct with you and with my yes vote, I hope that you do the same for me. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there are six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, one absent. The nomination can move to second read at the next council meeting.
Thank you very much. Let me be the first to congratulate you. Congratulations, Commissioner Worley, on your nomination. We're excited to have you in this position. You've worked very hard to get, get here and we look forward to continuing to work with you. We will, this committee will now be in recess. This committee will now be in recess for the next 10 minutes in which we will then hear the fire commissioner. Good evening. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We're here to, here EA 23-0209, James W. Wallace, Fire Chief of Baltimore City Fire Department. I am Isaac Gitsi Schleifer, Chair of the Committee. To my left, I have Councilman Conway, Councilman Burnett, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Costello, and Councilwoman Porter. Chief, I want to thank you for all of your years of service to the department. I've had the honor and privilege to work with you on many occasions, unfortunately, a lot of emergency situations, including disasters that have occurred in my district. And you've always been there from the beginning and stayed up until the very end. And that's, that's very honorable and I appreciate all the service that you've done across the city, but also within my district. And so I'm very happy to see that you've been nominated to this position and give you an opportunity to introduce yourself, say what you'd like to say, and then we'll turn it over to questions from the committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And good evening, Chairman Schleifer and honorable members of the committee, as stated. My name is James Wallace and it is my honor to stand before this committee tonight as Mayor Scott's nominee for the Office of Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department. Having obtained my paramedic certification in 1989, one that I proudly retain today, I immediately submitted a single application for employment. This evening, as I stand before you, some 34 years later, I proudly wear the uniform of the agency to which I applied. I began my journey with the City of Baltimore in 1990, being assigned to a medic unit for a period of nine and a half years. During this time, I was awarded the Paramedic of the Year Award in 1993 for successful lifesaving measures administered to a Baltimore City Police Officer, having sustained a traumatic injury resulting in cardiac arrest. Through the remaining years assigned to a medic unit, I was also a two-time recipient of the department's second highest service award, the Meritorious Service Award, first for assisting in the rescue of two drowning victims and secondly, for again, and unfortunately, providing lifesaving treatment to a Baltimore City Police Officer who had sustained a severe traumatic injury. I voluntarily demoted in 1999 to firefighter, firefighter, paramedic, but was promoted to lieutenant in 2003. At that time, I served in various assignments. From 2009 to 2019, I would achieve the ranks of captain, battalion chief, and deputy chief. As a captain, I was the City of Baltimore's hazmat coordinator and upon promoting to battalion chief, I was assigned to build upon the department's pre-existing special operations program as a special operations chief. Both of these assignments I took great pride in. I successfully combined the hazmat team, the technical rescue element of the fire department, and the dive team into one cohesive working group that to this date exemplifies an all-hazards approach to both natural and man-made disaster. I have successfully led special operations personnel during major local disaster events such as the Frederick Avenue flooding event, the Howard Street tunnel collapse, and the tornado that unfortunately struck the Amazon facility years ago. But that's just to name a few. I have also led personnel on deployments outside of the City of Baltimore due to requests from, from others, from neighboring states, including the locations in York County, Pennsylvania, Ocean City, Maryland, and Sampson County, North Carolina. Each of these deployments exemplified the capabilities and the professionalism of the Baltimore City Fire Department. Upon being promoted to deputy chief in 2019, I briefly served as a shift commander, but in March of 2020, I was asked by then Mayor Young's administration to assume the role of acting director of the Office of Emergency Management in anticipation of the arrival of COVID. This has proven to be my biggest challenge to date. For a period of 634 consecutive days, my office worked in support of our Health Commissioner and many other key agency leaders to coordinate a citywide response, mass vaccination and testing, worksite decontamination, procurement and logistics management, and further assisted in developing citywide policies that today could be reinstituted in the event of a similar incident. that today could be reinstituted in the event of a similar incident. While COVID presented many unprecedented challenges, the City of Baltimore faced many other challenges during this time, such as major incidents occurring on Labyrinth Road, Lanier Avenue, and Hillen and 35th Street, just to name a few. These career experiences have helped me to evolve as an emergency services leader. I currently hold a bachelor's degree in fire science with a focus on administration and graduated with summa cum laude honors. I'm accredited as an instructor by the Maryland Fire and Rescue Institute, New Mexico Tech, the University of Arizona, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Throughout my career, I have continuously sought the training and skills needed to make me a better service provider, as well as prepare me for leadership positions. I believe that successful emergency services organizations are built upon four pillars. These four pillars are, first and foremost, our employees. Secondly, quality professional development. Third, adequate equipment. And four, adequate finances. While each of these pillars stands on its own, all must be interconnected for an organization to successfully meet the trends and, in some cases, the expectations of the emergency services world. I am cognizant of the challenges facing our fire department. These challenges, including staffing, equipment shortages, and the current morale levels of our employees have existed for some time, but it is now my responsibility to develop solutions. Upon being appointed by Mayor Scott, I immediately opened lines of communications with both local unions and have actively pursued solutions to some of their immediate concerns. I have also met with the Vulcan Blazers, who is our local chapter of the International Association of Black Professional Firefighters, the Phoenix Group, representing women in the fire service, and representatives from our BCFD Pride Alliance, who represent our LGBTQ employees to provide all voices of our fire department an opportunity to be heard. Collectively, we will work to identify problem areas and to move our department towards achievable solutions. I intend to expand upon current recruitment activities by building a larger contingent of recruitment personnel that represent all facets of the fire department. In the coming days, we will officially announce a financial incentive program designed to attract and retain emergency medical service providers. We will also build upon our current efforts to reach our schools and colleges, as well as expand and increase our visibility and engagement activities in the communities that we serve, thus building better community connections. While we have vastly improved our professional development capabilities, we will continue to be better. In addition to our Fire Academy, we have local access to some of the finest training in the country that is offered at the National Fire Academy and the Emergency Management Institute, both of which are located in Emmitsburg, Maryland. Both institutes not only offer exceptional professional development opportunities, they also provide opportunities for students to achieve college-level credits that can be applied to certain degree programs. Finally, in the wake of the Stricker Street tragedy, our department has made many changes, but there is much work still to be done. While we continue to move forward instituting recommended changes, we also continue to seek funding opportunities to support same. As an example, our department was recently awarded an $846,000 grant under a fire prevention and safety grant. These funds will be used directly to expand our code x-ray program, as well as expand upon our current smoke detector program. We are also fortunate to be the recipients of the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Award that netted approximately $1.6 million to enhance our emergency medical services and firefighter safety initiatives. These prestigious grants signify not only an effort on behalf of the Baltimore City Fire Department, but the federal government's recognition of the BCFD's commitment to excellence in emergency response and firefighter training. In closing, I'd like to reaffirm my commitment and dedication to ensuring the integrity of our great department and the safety of the citizens of Baltimore. I'm happy to address and/or answer any questions the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Interim Chief Wallace, can you talk about, a little bit about what your plans are to advance the department's agenda in terms of procuring new apparatus and other necessary equipment for the department and its personnel?
Yes, sir, and thank you for the question. So we, we have a lot of apparatus on order right now. One of the challenges that we're facing is, really, is it's, it's, it's a supply chain issue. We, we have apparatus that was ordered as far back as, as our FY '21 budget, and we're still waiting on that apparatus to get here. We are, and, and our assistant chief of, of that particular service is in the room and can elaborate further if needed. It's just a matter of being able to get the equipment here. We have 32 first-line engines right now that are 10 years old or less, which, which is a good thing. But we do have three that are older than 10 years. That should change within the next couple of months, we believe. I, one of the first things I did was put an assistant chief into our apparatus committee and asked that assistant chief travel with the committee as they go to do final inspection on the apparatus. The reason that I did that was to be able to carry our message as a city that we, we want this apparatus sooner. We're not happy with the, with the delay times. We presented to Councilman Conway's committee yesterday and displayed information that indicates that, in some cases, the delivery times on some apparatus has, has multiplied times three. So where we would have gone from nine to maybe 12 months on delivery of new apparatus, we're looking at 24, 36, and in some cases, 48 months from the time apparatus is ordered until we can, until we can get that apparatus. But that's not the only problem we have with that. We also, with regard to supply chain issues, we have trouble getting the simplest parts. And it's, again, it's beyond our control. With small parts that do big things in apparatus, in fire apparatus, will, will ultimately cost us downtime, and a lot of that is beyond our control. Even working with, with fleet, they can't get the parts either. So it's, it's become kind of an evolving issue that unfortunately, I don't know that there's a whole lot we're going to be able to do about it until the supply chain issues. The final thing I'll say, the current auto worker strike, we anticipate that could create some problems as well, especially with our medic units.
Thank you, Chief. And I, last part to that question. Can you address the, the water fleet or the boats specifically?
Could you repeat that, sir?
Can you, sorry. Can you address the, the fire boats as well in addition to that apparatus?
Right, so, so we have three fire boats down there. Now, our largest fire boat was initially purchased on a urban area security initiative, urban area security initiative grant. That grant, I don't, I don't recall what the original cost of the boat was now. I think we're probably looking between 20 and 30 million to replace that. However, and Chief, Chief Case is actually to my right. He can answer specifically. I do believe we are in a position right now with fleet to replace at least one of the fire rescue boats. So what I want to avoid with the fire rescue boats are duplicate model years, which is where we're at now. You know, we, I want an offset of that. So a three, five-year offset in model years, I think, would be the most favorable way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Chief Wallace, I want to pivot to streamlining our workflows, particularly spanning from 911 all the way to contact for our EMS professionals. Can you talk to me about our system that we use Pro-QA? And how we code, I think it was 2601 that you all mentioned yesterday? Was it 2601? The code, yeah, the sick codes. How you, how you, how you coordinate those codes and code them into Pro-QA? And then, once you answer that question, how, how does that code affect the trucks that are going out from, from our, from our engine houses?
So, in, in the interest of being accurate for you, because I will not be able to give you a full answer on that, I'm going to ask Chief Matts and, if need be, Director Reddick to also speak to that.
Good evening, once again, City Council and Fire Department. So the software that we use, Pro-QA, we use it for all three disciplines, what it's going to be. Sorry about that, which is police, fire, and medic. This is actually a program that we have to use throughout the whole state of Maryland. And Pro-QA is a standardized questions that we have to ask the callers in order to get them the service that they need. That's through, we can give them lifesaving instructions, how to actually secure a building if it's on fire, and as well as give them instructions before the police get there to like, secure the scene if evidence is left behind. So that's a standardized question that we use throughout the state of Maryland. So we can give, no matter what county you're in, you're going to always receive the same type of questions, the same type of service, and you should also receive the same type of response. And that's to make the systems not biased. So if you're in Queens, and or you're in Baltimore City, you should be getting the same level of service. So when it comes down to the coding, the coding is specifically done by Priority Dispatch. They already have the coding in place. So it's up to your agency to code it appropriately based off of the way you want your responses to go. And that question will go to Chief Matts. So 20, the card 26, the 26 card is our sick case card. Sick case, it can be numerous things. It can go from as far as a headache to all the way down to, like, your toe. Like stump your toe, your toe aches. So it, high and lows. So we, we dispatch off of Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, Echo. Echo is the highest one you can get to. So if you have a non-breathing and it's, and it's actually occurring now, then that's an Echo. Where if you have something where like, oh, I woke up, my toe, I have toe pains, it's going to be an Alpha, meaning it doesn't require that fast of a response. So I'll let Chief Matts go from there.
So before you go, before you go into Chief Matts, before you go into that, I want to go back a little bit to the, to the coding. So the 911 dispatch codes to the agency and the agency code?
So the way it is, Priority Dispatch are already set to their codes. So it's already set, it's already in their software. When we do, every 911 specialist is certified in Priority Dispatch, all three disciplines. So, and you have certain requirements that you have to comply to in order to, to actually use Priority Dispatch. So one of the requirements says, anybody that uses the medical portion of it, we have to be CPR certified. Because we give CPR instructions over the phone. So they want to make sure you understand what you're doing and you're doing it correctly. So with the coding, the coding, like I said, medical has its own set of codes. Fire has its own set of code. Police has its own set of codes. And the way the codes are, we have it in Priority Dispatch, but it's up to that agency if they choose to mirror that same code off of that response. So fire department choose to go off of the coding of Priority Dispatch. So if I'm coding it, if my 911 specialist is putting in a call and it goes for a 26, Alpha, or one, that's how fire department is going to dispatch it. Whereas now I'm using EPD, which is the Emergency Police Protocol. If I'm using, prime example, 106, which is, and I don't want to get it wrong or misquote myself, but I'm just going to throw it out there. If I'm saying 106 is for a shooting, police chose not to use the coding of 106. They're going to keep it as a 4A. So it's up to that agency in particular to use the coding based off of what they feel is though.
So the level of dispatch, is that connected to the coding that we use from the agency? Is that correct? Okay. So one of the things, the reason why I bring that up, and I was just talking to Chief Matts before the hearing about how we are noticing that for a lot of sick calls that are going out, and this was presented in the data yesterday, how we're sending 100% of our deployment out to these sick calls. And I'm wondering if there is some sort of way that we can delineate, like, if 5% or 10% or 20% of our equipment needs to go out instead of 100% of our equipment going out every single time? And then, you know?
Thank you for that question, Councilwoman Porter. Just to piggyback a little bit on what Director Reddick said, the 26 is our most common call type of sick call. We get approximately 33,000 of those per year. It's the most common and most low acuity for the most part. When she, when she was describing the letter Alpha, the Alpha and the Bravo are the lowest acuity, lowest priority calls. And they actually account for, there's actually an Alpha 1 through 12. There's just one Bravo. When you start getting into the Charlie and Delta, that's sicker people, and that's when we need, probably need an ambulance or a medic unit to get there. With regard to what we're dispatching to the call, yesterday, we were lucky enough to meet Dr. Nussbaum. Dr. Nussbaum is doing a deep dive on our call determinants. There's predetermined dispatches that go to certain call determinants. What he's looking at right now is the most frequent low-acuity call with the lowest risk of, of harm or bad patient outcome. Those are calls we're trying to avoid sending unnecessary units to, or we're even looking at this time about holding or delaying those calls. The key now is to be able to look at the calls and send the right resource to the right patient. Sometimes those low-acuity calls are going to need, they're going to have to wait a little bit. We're working out right now where we can actually pump the brakes or pause a low-acuity call a little bit while we direct our efforts to the higher acuity, like your chest pain, somebody has a heart attack, or cardiac arrest for a shooting.
Mr. Chair, can I make a committee request, please?
Depends. What's the request?
Thank you. Chief Wallace, if you could provide me, as if confirmed, some ways that you're going to streamline not only the deployment, but also how you're going to triage your personnel with the use of technology so that we can accurately see kind of how the department is deploying resources, where they're deploying resources, and ways that we can reduce some of those costs and waste throughout the agency. Thank you.
Councilwoman, do you want to, do you want like a briefing on that?
You say what?
You want, you want like a briefing on that?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, okay. If you can provide a briefing on that. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you. Acting Chief Wallace.
Thanks, sir.
Long time no see.
Yes, sir.
Very brief question. We talked about it a little bit yesterday. I, I would like you to give a little detail on our efforts on one of your pillars, and that is, of course, our people. You know, we, of course, need to do a better job recruiting. We, of course, need to do a better job getting people through that recruiting system and through our hiring system, and also retaining folks. So I'm curious what your thoughts are about our people, how we keep them, how we attract them.
Yeah, so I, I, I think where we are right now with regard to morale, a lot of it's a factor of just exhaustion. We, we're a very high-call-volume department. We're a very high-call-volume city, for that matter. And when, when we have vacancies, all we do is we start doubling, tripling, quadrupling call load onto not only the same apparatus, the same units, but the same people. And I think that's what's wearing them down. We are currently in the process of interviewing EMT firefighters right now. There were, I believe, there, they've interviewed over 100 in the past two days. So they are actually in, in the third step of the process. And they've got a couple more steps to go, but, you know, they're kind of on the, on the home stretch there. We've got to fill these spots. We have to fill them quick. One thing that, that I have part of my team looking at is actually shortening the time from the time they take a written test to the time we clear them to get into an academy. We, we go through a step, and then we have a break. And then we go through a step, and we have another break. And, you know, that, all we're doing is just prolonging what, you know, our, the problems we have right now with, with vacancies. So, so there's that. We, our recruitment and retention program is going to begin to offer financial incentives that'll be paid in three payments, not only to our new people that come in and make it through the academy, but also to some of our pre-existing providers as well as a retention-type bonus. So we're about to roll that out, and we're very excited about that. Ultimately, what we need to be able to do is, is compete with local jurisdictions. I was on a call today where everyone was kind of briefing out what they're doing with regard to hiring, and it's happening. It's happening all around us. We have to be competitive. We have to make the, the city and this fire department more attractive. So we're going to be reaching, not only, as I stated in my, in my opening, not only to schools, but to colleges. I'm very, very interested in approaching some of the local military institutions and recruiting veterans, as well as just being more active and more visible in the communities. I think, from the recruitment standpoint, it's, it's okay to say community engagement, but I think what we need to do is engage the community. So where we have tables set up and at events and things like that, instead of us just being behind the table and waiting for people to come to us, we, we have to come out from behind the table and go out and get in the crowds. And where, I, I truly believe that we miss people that maybe are afraid to come over and, you know, over and, you know, and talk to us. And I think all of that combined, it's my hope that we begin to see, you know, these, these applications to, to work here in the city, the numbers go up.
Thank you. Councilmember Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Endroom Commissioner, um, one of the, the, um, the things, uh, that I've spoken a lot about within the department are very concerning data around, um, promotions of women, women of color, people of color within the department, and making sure that the department itself is reflective of the citizens of Baltimore, and, and making sure that we're creating as many pathways into the department, uh, via apprenticeships and, and other initiatives. Can you speak to your plans to, to diversify the leadership of the department so that folks, kids in Baltimore City that are looking to a career in fire can see a path to the top?
Yeah, and, and thank you for that. We, uh, our list right now actually favor that. Uh, we've got some pre-existing test lists that are out right now. Uh, I'm excited to say we're gonna have, we are gonna be promoting some females very soon. Um, the other thing that I'll add is, when I left the Office of Emergency Management, and I'm extraordinarily proud of this, that was an all-female agency. All of my employees over there, it was all female. And there's, there's three of them here tonight, and they're amazing. So, um, I, I totally agree with you. I think that, um, I, I've had, well, I don't think, I've had conversations with, um, President Jones from, from the Vulcan Blazers, and we are actually working, I, I hope we're working towards a, um, a program that approaches the local schools, not necessarily at the high school level, but even as deep, as far back as the middle school level, to begin to, to kinda codify that interest at that age and get them in that train of thought and have them follow along that career path. Certainly, that apprentice program is, is an opportunity to do so as well. That's something that the Director of Training and I have talked about as recently as tonight, um, our ideas and thoughts to, to kinda build a program consistent with that, that piece of legislation that you had. Yet, make it conducive to our fire academy and maybe some of what, um, the chief's capabilities are, ultimately getting that end result. So, um, all that is, I, I'm satisfied that all that is underway. You know, to your point, that is certainly a consideration that's being, that something is being taken into consideration, consistent with what we're trying to develop now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chief. I'm sorry I wasn't here at the beginning of your remarks, I was hungry. But, I just wanna be clear, I know I've had conversations with some of your staff about this, and my biggest fear and my concern is EMS in the city of Baltimore, when they are the bulk of the calls. What are your strategies around ensuring the capacity of not only the EMS team, but also reimbursements in terms of the cost of EMS? Because when you think about the bulk of the calls versus the percentage of the budget, those are real concerns for me.
Right. Yeah, and, and thank you for that. And, and, you know, just last year alone, approximately a hundred and eighty thousand calls, and maybe fifty percent of those resulted in, in patient transport. So, um, to your point, absolutely, that is a concern. Um, I'm looking at a couple of models right now to, uh, for EMS service delivery that I believe will, um, especially help our paramedics, our advanced life support providers, and, and possibly be able to, and we're very early in this, so I'm gonna use terms like possibly, but, um, possibly very, we may be very able to strategically, um, not only place, but dispatch our paramedics to the calls that are most needed. So from, from that perspective, um, some of the initial numbers that we get indicate that if we, if we downgrade our medic units to BLS transport units, there's a cost savings there. If we take our paramedics and put them on, um, some type of a chase vehicle, there may be cost savings with that as well. Plus, it broadens our ability to provide paramedics on a larger scale throughout the city, but more strategically and when they're needed. So those are a couple of things that we're looking at right now with regard to EMS service, and I, I, I hope that, that covered your question?
It does. I do know that some cities have moved to triaging and sending persons in ride share, so I'm interested in seeing how we, as a city, think out of the box. I say this, um, full disclosure for my own personal reasons, as well as any other citizen. I had a three-year-old last year who had a femoral seizure, and there was no EMS available. Fifty-two responded, but I had to transport my three-year-old to the hospital, right? And understanding that there was no one available. So I get the high cost for service, the fact that our hospitals don't have beds in our ERs, and that sometimes our medics are at a hospital for four or five hours. So I'm thinking about the capacity of the staff, but also how we can be flexible enough so that we can get to the, those urgent calls and make sure that people are getting the same service delivery that they need.
Yeah, and thank you for that. And I, Chief Matts does have a, a plan in place that, that is, was pre-me, so I would like him to clarify that answer for you as well, if, if you have just a second for that.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Um, we're actually trying a multi-prolonged approach to try to not only address our high-acuity calls, like I spoke about earlier, you know, a third of our calls every year are low-acuity or low-priority call. The trick is, there's no magic bullet, but we're trying as many different aspects and different programs to try to get the right patient to the right resource. Some of those calls are gonna involve alternate transportation, like you said, using ride share, Uber, Lyft, and things like that. What we're doing right now, we're in the final stages of an RFP with a nurse in the nine-one-one center, it's gonna be modeled very similar to what they're using in DC. With that nurse in nine-one-one centers, they have low-acuity calls that are farmed off to that group. They're able to go and offer alternative transport, alternative things like an urgent care center, or an FQHC, or a doctor's office. So many other ideas that we're looking at as well is alternate destination. That's where we're able to take people, not to the ER, but we're gonna take them to an urgent care center, we're gonna take them to stabilization center or something like that, where they can get the appropriate treatment. We're also looking at, uh, we put a population health group on the street about forty-four days ago, and they've been doing some remarkable work. What they're trying to target is, little by little, they're trying to ramp up different programs. The one we started with initially was our opioid and our overdose problem that we have in the city. In forty-four days, they were actually able to outreach, um, over eight-hundred-and-fifty individual, uh, calls. They actually, along with while they're going out to treat people, they're also doing community education, and they did over a thousand minutes of community education. And then along with that, they're also leaving brown bags, which are leave-behind kits that offer Narcan, Alexone, as well as, uh, information on, on, um, different programs that are available, as well as fentanyl test strips. In forty-four days, they left already eleven-hundred kits. To put that in perspective, we started leave-behind in twenty-eighteen, and through twenty-twenty-three, we'd only left behind two-thousand-five-hundred kits. In forty-four days, they've already left over eleven-hundred kits. Uh, the state's having trouble keeping up with us. Along with that program, they're just rolling at its very infancy stage. They're also looking at some of our super-user population. We have, we have a, a strong percentage of our super-users, and we're trying to outreach and link them with the appropriate service. So we have a lot of different, um, pans in the fire to try to help the different angles and different problems, along with different models for a higher acuity in severe, um, critical patients. Thank you. Madam CEO?
Do you mind if I offer just one additional thing? So I think that, uh, the council member is reading my emails, uh, because just a couple of hours ago, um, I was exchanging a few emails about this very, um, issue and, um, a possible partnership with a ride-share company, um, to partic, to potentially look at, um, reducing the cost, um, of, of our, um, services. And so this came about from the work that we are doing around nine-one-one diversion. So we've been actually looking at some of the calls that we've received and identifying if there is an alternative solution. And so, again, it's the model that's in DC and a couple of other locations that we're looking to bring here. So just wanted to raise that. And I ran here to make sure that I told you that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. The data we got yesterday in the Oversight Hearing was, uh, impressive, and I'm very glad that you brought that to us. I've been thinking a lot about, um, the, the data you provided, particularly around vacant properties. So I wanted to just do a follow-up request. You had talked about in the slides about the fact that out of the, um, twenty-four injuries that firefighters incurred, um, almost half of them were in, um, vacant and abandoned properties. I wonder if, um, you can supply to the committee and also to the Public Safety Committee, uh, just another breakout around, you know, in the last two quarters of your, of your, um, calls, suppression calls in particular, although EMS, I think, would need to be included and broke it out. How many of those calls, uh, are to, uh, address a fire or an emergency at a vacant property? Um, in the last two quarters? And if you could include that in your slides moving forward, um, that I think would be a data point that, um, would be really important for us. And I, um, I know you also break it out between Codex and Vacant, so you just keep that, because I think there's a distinction there, and I do appreciate that, um, appreciate that as well. And then I have a question, but, Mr. Chair, I don't know how you wanna move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, uh, had a question about, um, we didn't get a chance yesterday to talk about, I think, our, um, one of our top, um, uh, items, and then, um, actually Chief Eames came up to me and said, "I thought you were gonna ask the permits question." So go ahead, Chief Eames, why don't you, um, or, uh, Chief Wallace, about, you know, we have had, um, talked about permit reform. Obviously, there's been a lot about, um, the fact that we, you know, there's delays in, um, reviews and, um, inspections, and Chief Eames has been extremely, um, responsive to addressing some of the ones that I've brought to him. So, uh, what other, what are the reforms that you're doing in the, um, office, um, in the Fire Marshal's office, just to make sure that those are, we wanna keep everybody safe, we wanna keep customers safe, we wanna keep residents safe, um, so we don't wanna cut corners, but we certainly wanna be more efficient, uh, in that regard.
So I'll, I'll start off by saying real quick that Chief Eames has a plan that he's very proud of. So I don't, I don't wanna steal his thunder, go ahead, Chief.
So hopefully I, I answered this question right, Chief Wallace. So, um, from the Public Safety Budget hearing, as you recall, we have two inspectors detailed there now, uh, there in training now, so that should definitely increase our, our amount of customer service. We had a interview for a plan review, which we talked about yesterday. Um, I believe it was a very successful interview, so hopefully that will cut down, um, the delay for, for that part. So we still have one, we still have one vacancy left, so I do anticipate with the two people that are in training being, being cut loose in the next month or so, and the plan review should definitely make everything go, um, a lot smoother. Um, from the Public Safety Budget hearing as well, you made a request that I contact each of the agencies and talk to them on a, on a bi-weekly basis. I have done that, and we've been working, you know, a lot better together. So with, um, with all those efforts, I think we'll, we'll definitely, um, improve the service.
So you're increasing your capacity in terms of staffing, as well as doing better around, coordinating with, um...
Um, I believe we really didn't have, um, a true issue, but now that we talk on a, on a bi-weekly basis, we just really like, we're, we're fine-tuning those little minor issues that we have, talking.
Councilwoman, I, I'd also just like to add, um, with regard to the, the fire prevention inspectors, we are working through a plan right now where we're gonna actually deploy fire prevention inspectors to battalions. They're gonna be assigned geographically to battalion areas, so they will have fire stations that they're gonna report to, they will be in those battalions, they will become part of those battalions in a sense that they'll actually be providing service to set geographical areas. So, um, one of my goals is to, um, get them to those inspection sites quicker, be able to capture the data they need, bring it back to a central repository, be able to download it so that Chief Eames, um, has it. The other thing is, um, I believe it'll help, um, a part of a fire, of our fire department just have better ownership over parts of the community, have that better interaction. Each of you will know who, who's assigned to your areas, so, you know, if there are enhanced needs, questions, things like that, they'll be right there in those geographical areas. So, um, we're actually gonna start that, I believe, with two battalions. Um, I'm working with Chief Case and Chief Eames on that, we're gonna start with two, just to kinda test it, and then it's gonna, it's gonna expand and grow into all six. Ultimately, the other thing that that's gonna do for us is create some room in, in the Fire Marshal's office. As many of you know, Acting Commissioner Worley and I are actively pursuing an arson task force, a joint-combined fire and police task force, um, but also with the ability to host and house other agencies to be able to assist. So the inspector and the planning thing is part of a bigger plan. So there, there, there's a lot happening in the Fire Marshal's office right now.
All right, now that, uh, everybody in the council got an opportunity to ask questions, we'll go into public testimony. I see we have here, uh, Jason Rodriguez. I guess he's not present. All right, uh, next up, Josh Vannan.
Can you hear me now? Thank you, Mr. Chair, honorable members of the committee. I know it's been a long night, so I will be brief, no matter how long this takes. My name is Josh Vannan, I am the President of the Baltimore Fire Officers, IFFF Local nine-sixty-four. I represent over seven-hundred active and retired Baltimore City Fire Officers. I could stand up here and tell you about Chief Wallace's thirty-three-year career that's spread across various disciplines in his assignments, from EMS, the fire suppression, hazardous materials, OEM. You guys have heard that already, he's already told you, you know well about that. My job is to be concerned with the, uh, never-ending struggle for the best wages, benefits, and working conditions for the Baltimore City Fire Officer. And to that end, um, I can confirm that Chief Wallace, on his first day, once his nomination was announced, reached out to myself and President Costa of Local seven-thirty-four, set a meeting. Uh, we met, it was very, um, welcoming. We discussed a lot of the issues that the department's presently facing, we've had follow-ups. He pledged to us to have an open-door policy and to have an open ear, to hear what our concerns are, and he has held true to his word from day one. He's also only mentioned, uh, his concern being the, his best, the best interest of the citizens of Baltimore and how they're impacted by emergency service delivery from the Baltimore City Fire Department, and that's something I do have respect for, 'cause we feel the same way. And the labor-management relationship existing, even if we disagree sometimes, we can agree sometimes, we can disagree other times, it's a very important relationship to maintain and that needs to exist. And I'm hopeful that that will continue, and I'm hopeful that this decision is not gonna be too difficult of one for you to make tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, Jason, we see you walk back in, would you like to testify? You gotta hit the right button, so the, so it lights up red. Yeah, there you go, here on.
Thank you again, Committee Chair, Vice Chair, and, uh, committee members, and as well as the firemen and women of the Baltimore Fire Department, just like to thank them for their service to our city. But I just have some questions. I don't think that I have to go into the details of some of the articles that's been posted in the Baltimore Sun in reference to the history of our, uh, nominated, uh, police, uh, I'm sorry, Fire Chief. And I just had some questions, I'm just wondering, what are we doing here? I believe in second chances, don't get me wrong, I'm a product of second chance, uh, but I'm not also applying for the highest position in our police department as well. Um, and I just have some questions as to, uh, are there not better men and women that have served in our police, in our fire department, um, that can serve our city better? Are there not folks that have residency in the city, that have paid the price for living in the city, that have worked up through the ranks of the fire department, that may have started out in poor communities and eventually moved to more affluent communities in the city, that may have been safer, but have paid the sacrifice of living in this city? And, and that's all I just really have concerns about. Again, I'm just really concerned that some of these nominees... Again, I, I'm just really concerned that some of these nominees, um, or some of these confirmation hearings, uh, which seems to be a dog and pony show, um, it's just, to me, is not presenting the best of the best that the city has to offer in reference to the men and women that served within our fire department. That's all. And I'm just bringing that concern. Um, and there's many of folks that have left that had some of the same similar concerns that just didn't want to wait. But again, I, I'm starting to see that these, uh, confirmation hearings are starting to be dog and pony shows, um, and, uh, the, the concerns of the, the media, the concerns of the community, um, and just, uh, again, just a little bit of respect to the men and women that have paid the price, that live in this city, that have served in our fire department, is, is not being considered, uh, at these hearings. So thank you again for the time and opportunity.
Thank you for sticking around and for your testimony. Uh, that concludes the public testimony unless anybody else who's here would like to come up and testify. Uh, seeing none?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, um, Chief. It's been a pleasure working with you over the past few years, um, nine years, whatever it's been. Um, you have been an outstanding public servant, um, acted with integrity, um, have been a voice of calm and reason during emergencies. Uh, I'm fully confident that you're able to lead this department in the next chapter. With that, Mr. Chair, I move the nomination favorably.
Okay, I'll second that. We'll do a roll call. Uh, first up, Chair Schleifer, that's me, I vote yes. Next up, uh, Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Middleton is, has an excused absence. Uh, Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Aye.
Councilman Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, there are six bolts in the affirmative, no negatives, one absent. This nomination can go to second read at the next council meeting.
Let me be the first to congratulate you, uh, Chief Wallace, on making it through this committee. Um, thank you for your willingness to serve. I'd like to also thank the mayor for, uh, for appointing you to this position. Um, you're certainly qualified and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
We are now adjourned.